The filming?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. At this time, 7:00 PM, I will ask for a quorum for the public hearing. On my left is Jean Julian, Kathy Bakayaki, myself, Nancy Rovetto, Ron Hull, and Cindy Rumel. The second, I will have the secretary read the call of the legal notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Stafford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on March 27, 2018, at 7:00 PM, the Warren Memorial Town Hall Veterans Meeting Room, 1 Main Street, Stafford, Connecticut, 06076, to consider the following. Public hearings, changes to the zoning regulations, including in-law apartments, agricultural tourism, gasoline sales, and accessory buildings. At this meeting, interested people may be heard and written communication received. Copies of legal notice and the regulation updates are in file in the town clerk's office, Town of Stafford, Connecticut. Respectfully submitted, Nancy Rovetto, Chairman. This was in the Journal Inquirer, March 6th and March 24th, 2018.
Thank you, Kathy. The process for the public hearing will be, we will ask our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Perkins, to present the in-law apartments, the agricultural tourism, gasoline sales, and accessory buildings that we had worked on. Following that, we could have any other discussion with the commission, and following that, we will open it up to the public. If you wish to make any comments or statements, you have to preface with your name and address for reporting. So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Perkins just to review what the regulations are.
The conversion to an in-law apartment in a residential home has been something that we've allowed by special permit for a number of years. The permit that we give is good for three years, and then it needs to be renewed by me. That is sort of a cumbersome task, and it hasn't always been performed in the past. Most of the special permits that we've heard through a public hearing have not been contentious. Recently, there was a public act that allowed for accessory buildings to be used for in-law situations or medical needs. That was something we opted out of, but we discussed perhaps changing our regulations to make it a little bit easier to have an in-law apartment. So that's what we've done. We've also added that the in-law person could be a parent, grandparent, uncle, brother, sister, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, child, or child-in-law, and also a caregiver as certified by a license decision. We've also agreed that after that situation, changes, that you could rent the apartment, but the apartment would have to be rented at below prices that would qualify the apartment as affordable housing as defined in Connecticut General Statutes 8-39. That's basically the proposal.
Any discussion on the commission?
I think it's great change. It's one more thing that we do to, you know, continue updating and changing our regs to adapt. I mean, the three-year renewal didn't make any sense before, really. It wasn't being followed, so what was the point of it? So this is a good change, I think.
And also, our previous regulation said that you had to return the house to its original status. And to me, I mean, if you add on a room, does that mean you have to then tear down the room again? And according to those regulations, that's what you would have to do. So that was one of the major changes, is that you can keep the apartment and to rent it and have some income. And it also complies with the state as far as trying to get affordable housing for people. So I think we really did an overall good job on trying to hit all of the angles to help everyone. Thank you, Dave.
I have one question.
No, no. And also, Dave, if you remember, you're a member of the public. You have to wait for a public. You can't speak during this part or any discussion with the commission. I'll explain it later in the rules. Okay.
What do you want to do now?
The next one.
The next one is accessory agricultural activities. This is a brand-new regulation. It was basically formulated by the Agricultural Advisory Committee. It deals with agricultural engagement as well as agricultural events. Agricultural engagement is defined as the opening to the public of a working farm or any agricultural, horticultural, or agribusiness operation for the purpose of enjoyment, education, or active involvement in the activities of the farm, including but not limited to U-PIC, community-supported agriculture, wine tours, and associated tastings, agricultural workshops, classes, and demonstrations. Agricultural events are events of limited duration on a farm that are incidental to agricultural uses, including but not limited to hayrides, corn mazes, festivals, petting zoos, and other similar activities. These are all fee-based activities. Fee-based activities that are part of an agricultural operation's overall offering but are not incidental to agriculture are allowed by permit. Such uses may include, but not limited to, outdoor recreation such as birdwatching, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, mountain biking, and other passive recreational activities, as well as rental of farm property for small and large-scale events, such as parties, weddings, and other non-agricultural activities. So that's two separate things. There is one that's the passive use of the property that's not agricultural-related. The second one deals with small and large-scale events, and those are subsection A and B in the regulation. In a small-scale farm event, are allowed within agricultural activities permit. Only low-volume amplified sound or music, as determined by the ZEO, will be allowed during these events. A site plan review will only be required if these events happen more than 10 times per year, or they require parking for more than 20 vehicles at any given time. That's something that either needs to be stated up front, or it's something that's going to come about as a result of an activity that increases over time. Large-scale events are the next step up from that. You would have 20 vehicles or more, and you may have loud, amplified music. These would be allowed after a, with a...
Special use permit.
Well, with a special permit. Give me a second here. More than 20 vehicles are expected require a special permit. In order to satisfy the conditions of a special permit, the commission may limit the number of events per year. The commission may also impose additional restrictions on the use if it determines, after a hearing, that the noise levels or other factors are causing a nuisance to nearby properties. So that gives the commission, and it gives the zoning enforcement officer the ability to go back to the commission after the special permit's been issued already and say, "We want to have another hearing. We want to hear from the public exactly what the problem is." The ZEO retains the right to meet annually with the farm owner to discuss any possible concerns. In the case of events when more than 20 vehicles are expected, but loud, amplified music is not a consideration, only a site plan review is required. So that would be no public hearing. The second page, I'm not going to go into deeply. It talks about parking locations. It talks about location lighting and noise. In terms of the noise, it cannot exceed the State of Connecticut noise standards. And that's basically the proposal.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so the non-agricultural is allowed by permit, and so even small-scale or large-scale needs a special permit, is all we do.
No, not small-scale. A site plan review for small-scale.
If it's less than 10 times a year...
A site plan.
Oh, less than 10 times a year.
Yeah.
For 20 vehicles.
I have received a correspondence, I think I would like to read it now to the commission members. It wasn't in our packet. We didn't receive it till too late. It says, "Attention, Mary Mida, Nancy Rovetto, Zoning Board, regarding agri-tainment events at the Foster Hill Farm and Garden. Please know, as one of the farm's adjacent neighbors, I am very concerned about the ramifications of approving these proposals at the zoning board meeting on Tuesday. For someone who has lived here for 20-plus years, planning to soon enjoy quiet retirement years in what began as a beautiful rural wildlife sanctuary-like setting, I have adjusted to the development of a donkey farm. I am trying to accept the more recent roadside market greenhouses. Kim and Carl have personally communicated with me regarding their plans for this venture, including privacy barriers between our properties, which was much appreciated. However, I want the board to know I am not in favor of going forward with agri-tainment events, which to me means more noise and activity in a once tranquil, peaceful area of town. Please consider the concerns of the neighbors who are making their decisions on Tuesday night. Sincerely, Susan Phillips, 17 Stafford Street." So if there's no other questions on agricultural, shall we go on to the gasoline sales?
I would just make a, not a question, but a quick comment. The Agricultural Advisory Committee spent a lot of hours on this and have come up with, I think, a pretty good plan, and I'm impressed with all the work they've done to produce what they've produced.
Thank you.
The, I was reviewing the gasoline station sales and repair and service garage regulations and found that the current regulations do not allow the establishment of a gas station within 1,000 feet of any entrance to a public park or playground, school, college, place of worship, public library, or residentially zoned dwelling on the same side of the street. So that basically eliminates garages, gas stations, and the other items mentioned from pretty much anywhere in Stafford. The big Y wanted to expand. We had a hearing about that. In hindsight, they probably couldn't have expanded because of the regulations. So we've gone through and changed the regulations, and one, basically, we changed that 1,000 feet to 100 feet. We did a few other updates that were into the State General Statutes, and we also changed another distance. There shall be no exits or entrances closer to 100 feet to any road intersection, nor shall there be any business or uses referred to in this section proposed for a location within, it used to be 200 feet, of any residential dwelling. And we're changing that to 100 feet of any residential structure.
So taking the word dwelling out.
That is situated in a residential district. And those are the major changes to that regulation. We also added the possibility of a convenience store to be permitted as an accessory use to the gasoline station. There are some requirements in there in terms of buffers and employees and parking.
Any questions? Oh, no, also in Article 5, Dave, commercial districts, we added under the scheduled permitted main uses, number 20, auto sales, auto repair, service station, and gasoline. Okay, accessory buildings.
Accessory buildings are basically treated the same way as primary buildings. However, there is always an exception in the regulations for accessory buildings that were under 15 feet in height, and those buildings could be closer to the sideline than the setback for the dwelling unit. It could be five feet from the sideline. It could be five feet from the rear line. However, it had to be 75 feet away from the street, or if the lot was less than 150 feet in depth, it would have to be in the rear half of the lot. It also didn't say anything about the size of the structure. So I think the intent of the regulation was to regulate small sheds to allow them to be placed closer to the sideline in the rear line. So what we've done is we've tweaked the regulation so that instead of referring to a structure under 15 feet tall, it refers to a structure under 12 feet tall and under 200 square feet in size. And rather than having to be, I drew a little picture up there that may be a little bit helpful. Rather than being 75 feet away from the road, the new small shed can be 40 feet back from the front line or within the same plane as the front of the house. So in that drawing up there, the original shed would have to be 75 feet back under the old regulations. Under the new regulation, since the house is 35 feet from the road, it can be on the same plane as the house. And that dimension to the right is 15 feet to the sideline. So you couldn't put a shed over there anyway, because all our minimum setbacks were 20 feet. So that shed would have had to go behind the house, which is not really where you necessarily want a shed.
Any questions?
Just a quick comment. I think this is great, another example of cleaning up, confusing regs and making them simpler and more straightforward, make it easier for people.
Anytime that we do any changes to our regulations, we have to get approval from our Capital Region Council of Governments. And we received on March 9, 2018, from CROG, the report on our zoning. And it said that the commissioners, their receipt is acknowledged of the referral. The staff of the Regional Planning Commission and the Capital Region Council of Governments has reviewed this referral, finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. The proposed regulations pertaining to in-law apartments provide for affordable housing opportunities which advance the regional plan of conservation and development's housing goal to increase the range of choice in housing for people of all incomes and all ages, but especially for those who have the least choice in achieving their locational preference. The proposed accessory regulations addressing agricultural uses and events, activities, and non-agriculturally related uses generally support the regional plan's policy recommendations to encourage zoning regulations that address urban, agricultural, and local food systems and support continued marketing of the region's arts and tourism opportunities. So in accordance with their procedures, this will constitute final CROG action on this referral. Respectfully submitted, Carl Profe, Chairman of the Regional Planning Commission, and Jennifer Bartis Early, Vice Chair. So CROG is in agreement, Commissioner, that they do not pose any difficulties. So if there are no further questions from the commission, I will now turn the public hearing over to the public and just remind you to state any concerns or whatever by prefacing with your name and your address. So does anyone?
Mark Tavolinas, 11 Stafford Street. I had a question about these accessory buildings. Are they part of farming, agriculture, or anybody?
These are only dealing with sheds that are under, structures that are under 200 square feet in size. So they could be on a farm, they could be in a residential site.
And they could be put anywhere within five feet of the local bound, of the boundaries?
Correct. As long as they're behind the plane of the house or 40 feet away from the street line.
Plane of whose house?
Of the primary house.
Okay. So they couldn't just come up and, you know, we're like 40 feet from their fence. They can't just come up and plunk a building from the back of my house?
A building that's 200 square feet or less could be within five feet of the border, potentially.
Anyplace in the field?
Yes, potentially.
I have a statement. I live in a double-A residential area, and I am opposed to these proposals put forth by the Act Commission. I was part of the commission till a month ago and realize how hard they are working to inform farmers better opportunities and providing guidelines for activities, but it shouldn't be at others' expense. No amount of buffering with obscure noise, lighting, and awareness of people coming and going, as well as increased traffic and parking on our street. The terrain of the land in our neighborhood magnifies sound as a megaphone would. I don't want any commercialism on Stafford Street, and as someone said at the July 7, 2016, public hearing, "Once you allow commercial property, there can be no changing it back." People can take advantage of that. I would also remind the zoning board, excuse me, and Chief Zoning Board Officer, that we are taxpayers and would like representation, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Tavolinas.
I have several.
Name?
Leonard Clark, 11 West River Grove. The first one is in 4.1, where it's dealing with in-law apartments.
The in-law?
Yeah. And there's a list of people who have committed in these apartments. I don't see leases and nephews there. Is that left out for a reason or just an oversight?
It was not in the original.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't in the original.
I don't know if it's in the original or not.
There it is.
Well, this is, this is right in the original.
This one here doesn't say leases and nephews.
This is the original that we have reworked. This is the original regulation. Right, that's the original that has been changed. This is the original, we have not changed who can be in the in-law apartment, except we have added the caregiver.
What I'm asking, I guess, is should they be included or not? Or is there a reason for not?
Well, I think, well, then you start getting the cousins and the second cousins, and you've got to draw the line.
Yeah, I understand. I was just wondering if it was left out or if it was just an oversight.
It was not in the original, 4.1.
All right. Let me see. Oh, yeah, under the agricultural stuff. Is it going to be, the way this is written, it's kind of subjective as to how loud that music or something like that can be. Is it going to be a decibel level?
There is a decibel level, yes.
Because I looked at this text, I couldn't find anything that said anything about the decibel.
It's there.
Okay. What is it? Do we know?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
I have it right here, 22A-69-1 through 22A-69-7-4, Connecticut DEEP noise standards.
Yeah, I printed those off. I didn't see a decibel level. Okay. I went on the state statute.
Did you ever try to find the state statute on your website?
Yeah, was something else here? Yeah, under 7.6, 3, under 3.
On A, a flexibility?
No business, furthermore, no business or use referred to in this section shall become non-conforming by reasons of general, elementary park, or playgrounds, school. But the rest of it's crossed out.
Okay, which, I'm sorry, what do you, it's 7.6.
7.6.
A, B, or C?
It said, I've got 3 underneath, 7.6, right, under A.
Under A, number 3 under A. Okay. Furthermore, no business.
Yeah. Does that mean if someone comes along and builds a church, and someone's business that's been there for 50 years is all of a sudden non-conforming?
It's saying that's not.
Huh?
It's saying it's not non-conforming.
Well, this one, but that's crossed out of the, it says, college, church, public library, or dwelling.
Because it's redundant anyway, because any non-conforming use is grandfathered in. So it doesn't really need to be said again.
Okay, okay. Just curious. Okay, I think that's about all I have.
Anyone else? I take Mr. Paul.
Oh, David, if you'd like going first, go right ahead. Dave Fongbrook, 45, we approve. I had a question. I'll go with the in-laws first. I didn't see it originally, but I did find it about the B restriction. I'm assuming that would be a letter prepared by the zoning enforcement officer or an approval of the zoning permit with that statement about the, if it's converted or if it's sold to qualify the apartment as affordable housing. That would be issued by you, and they would record that?
Yes.
When they got their initial approval?
Yes.
Okay. Then on the gas stations, special requirements were strictly...
Where?
It's the table.
On the table?
Item D, there's a, like a...
The next page?
Table with a setback.
That's all restricted.
Right. So my question is, what are the setbacks for a gas station, the underlying zone?
The underlying zone.
Yeah.
So in the local business, it's like 15-foot setback or something like that?
Correct.
There could be a building 15 feet off the road?
Correct. And this, and this part was only for corner lots.
Ah, okay.
Which is a little bizarre in and of itself.
Okay, so it's just going to be whatever the setbacks are for the underlying zone, whatever.
Quick question for you, David. Is that something you think we should change?
Well, this is for corner lots.
Right, but I'm, just know Dave's got a lot of expertise, and I want to...
I'm just concerned about cars queuing up for the gas pumps waiting out in the road if it's, if everything's up front. You know, obviously, I would think they would lay out a gas station, you know, to be most efficient, but...
For them, you mean, yeah, yeah. Do we need to tell them that? Do we need to settle a lot of these?
I think when you're doing your site plan, or when Dave's doing his site plan, we would.
Oh, good, good.
But I just want to be clear, and I saw all these distances stricken. I didn't see any new ones, so I didn't understand.
Well, and we also have up in the section 6, I guess it is, is a 25-foot buffer?
Yeah.
That's stuck in there, so that sort of trumps the 15-foot setback.
Okay.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Tyler Roberts, 27 Stafford Street. I'd like to go back to accessory buildings. And it said, I believe, somebody else brought it up, accessory buildings that are not more than 200 square feet in size and, you know, not 12 feet high. Accessory buildings to farming are regulated in section 7.2F. I could not find 7 points for that.
I think that's a valid point. I think that is a mistake we have in the regulations. I think that is a mistake we have in the regulations.
Um, so before we, you know, ask the board to rule, could you show us what 7.2F is exactly? Just, you know, because I wouldn't want a pigsty that's under 200 square feet put, you know, that close to my side property line, because my home is the minimum requirement from the side of my side yard, and this is saying that they could put a pigsty under 200 square feet next door to my house, 5 feet from the property line, which would be 55 feet, which I don't think anybody in the room would want. I just curious because I couldn't find the table or whatever the explanation is.
Well, see, the, the index has to be all changed, because every time we make a change with the regulations, all the numbers get changed.
No, rightfully so, absolutely, but I just, before we go forward, I'd like to know all the information that applies, so we don't make a mistake like, you know, from the future or in the past.
No, no structure, shelters, stables, barns, or similar structures, buildings, or appurtenances used for the keeping of housing or animals, okay? So that's a barn.
So no animals, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, alright, good, no, good, that's good.
That's a barn.
That's a barn, sure, but I mean, you know.
So people, people come into my office and they say, I'd like to build a barn, and I said, what are you keeping in it? They say, well, just my tractor and stuff.
No, sure, sure.
That's an accessory building.
Absolutely, but I have a goat, you know, I have three goats and they live in a smaller enclosure than 200 square feet.
Correct.
So you're saying that they could be within 5 feet of my neighbor's, my neighbor's, you know, property line?
No, they have to be 100.
They used to have a table 7.2F for the regulation, the way that it's worded.
It's 7, it's 7.4F.
What's 7.4F?
The.
Where the regulation is that, that 7.2 says it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're gonna put 7.4F in there before, you know, anybody votes on the regulations or you're gonna make that correction?
Let's put that on that, the list there, the 3.17A, the last line, instead of 7.2F should be 7.4F.
So could you just go over that 7.4F for me one more time, please?
Shelters, stables, barns, or similar structures, buildings, or appurtenances used for the keeping or housing of animals. No such structure used for the keeping of any such permissible animal or animals or for the storage of beef shall be located, one closer to the side and rear property lines to the minimum setback requirements of the zoning district in that the premises are located.
So you want to cut the current regulation in half?
No. This is, a barn is a. Pig is 300.
No, no, because you recently just let, you know, added pigs to the regulations and my neighbor just got pigs, so I just was curious and wanted to clear this up.
Okay, are you clear now?
I'm very clear, thank you. 300 feet. I think that's all I had on a, I had looked and found 7.2 and it was glass and ready removal. So I was like, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, that had been brought to our attention.
And now, I want to talk about convenience stores also. Before I had a question, it was accessory to what? And I think somebody cleared that up, it was accessory to a gas station. And, uh, but one thing I didn't find was if you're being a store on any permitted use table, because you're adding it to another zone, so shouldn't it?
We could find.
Shouldn't it be added to another table though?
It's a retail use, a convenience store would be a retail use in a, in a business zone.
In the local business zone, is that residential? And does that coincide with the residential zone together or?
No.
No, they're separate, alright, good. And also on 7.6B, the first sentence, um, the removal after a duly public, a duly advertised public hearing, I just was wondering why the, um, that was being taken out.
This is in the automotive?
7.6, section B, paragraph 1, I know you touched upon it, but I think you skipped over that, and that's a biggie.
This, there, the ZBA, any, anytime you have a, a gas station or a service station, you have to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Directly to the zoning board of appeals?
First stop is the zoning board of appeals.
That's the state, state law.
State statute, zoning board of appeals.
Who approves the location.
Who approves the location, that it's not too near a church, it's not too near a hospital, whatever, whatever they sort of want, they can say it looks good.
Or a house.
Whatever they want.
Okay, the, the other question is?
But, but they, they've recently changed the regulation, so the gasoline stations are governed by this board, service stations are governed by the ZBA. That's the change I made.
So, so two coinciding boards would have to rule on one place having a gas station and a convenience store?
If it's a service, if it's a garage.
Yup.
Repair, a repair.
If it's a repair garage and they want a convenience store.
No.
If a, a repair garage can't have the convenience store, because I've been to a repair garage with a convenience store and a gas station, you know. All kind of wrapped in one, and then you go to service stations where there's, you know, no gas and no food, you know, what the hell?
Yeah, no, it would be.
A cheeseburger or a candy bar.
It would be, it would be accessory to.
Okay, so, so in your opinion, you think they should be able to go directly to the ZBA with the convenience store addition to a gas station? Or just one board altogether and, you know, so the public doesn't have to make a complaint and then just turn into a public hearing thing and lawsuit?
I'm just following the state statute.
And the state statute's what?
State statute is that the ZBA hears the, it's not even a, a public hearing anymore for them, they just approve by.
It's just a location approval? Alright, alright, alright.
It's just the first step.
Yup, so, and, okay, so.
They, they keep changing that regulation, Tyler, like every two years.
Yeah, so that's why I, there's so much information on it and not so much information when I was reading about it. Uh, and also, 7.6, paragraph B, it says you want to remove any of the businesses or uses described above in the, also in paragraph 2 down here, you want to move, remove residentially zone dwelling on the same side of the street from 1,000 feet to 100, you want to move, you want to, you want to take 900 feet away from?
Yes.
That regulation, that, doesn't that seem a little excessive?
1,000 feet would basically.
It's 90% less than what it is now.
Feet would basically eliminate any gas station from being anywhere.
On the same side of the road, that's, that's the difference.
That's the structure.
Sure, but I mean, what if there's a house, you're gonna let them put an entrance to a gas station 200 feet away?
That's.
I mean, tractor-trailer trucks that haul gas are almost 100 feet long.
That's the way it's written.
Oh, okay, I, I.
They still would have to be in a, a commercial zone, they can't be in a residential zone.
No, I know, but if there was a residential zone directly across the street or 100 feet down from the commercial zone and there's a residential house right there, you know, like, you know what I'm saying? If a residential zone, in between a residential zone and a commercial zone, I believe in the regulations, there's a setback for a house, it could be two zones in one lot, a zone in a residential lot and a zone in a commercial lot, okay? So if you have a house 25 feet from that commercial, the lot line between zone, commercial and, uh, residential, you're gonna, you know, you could put the entrance essentially right under the window of someone's bedroom. I know, I know, but you want to, and it's just something I don't think we should continue doing. I mean, Scott knew that when he bought his house too, and that gas station is abandoned right now.
But a 1,000-foot buffer, you're gonna eliminate any development?
Well, it'll, uh, it's just protecting the public, you know, it's just public inconvenience that I'm just bringing these issues up for, you know? I understand there are issues now, like Scott Dobson's driveway, do you want to continue that trait of building like that? You know, having a house, you know, in a residential zone and also owning a part of a commercial zone, you, you're essentially allowing what Scott Dobson has to deal with to happen with, with changing the regulations like this. Taking 900 feet away, that's, I mean, I understand if you take, you know, 50% of it away, that's not saying you're completely, you know, giving it, you know, more side, one side more than the other. I could see if you change that regulation to 500 feet instead of 9, 9's crazy. Take a 900 feet away?
Is there anything else, Tyler?
Um, let me just refer back to my, so, uh, I think, um, oh, back to 7.6A, section 3, I skipped over it, I'm sorry, Butch touched about it earlier. You want to just take, uh, dwelling out and not college church, public library? I mean, if somebody builds any one of those near a business, it's gonna render it non-conforming, which means it's not allowed.
Are you're on still the automotive sales?
7.6, yes, 7.6.
Six, okay.
Paragraph A.
I believe you answered that question, why we took them out.
No, I skipped over it, I skipped over it.
No, he answered it.
I think Butch asked, but I.
Well, he answered it, Butch.
I just was wondering if you could answer it for me again.
Is there a question in there?
Yeah, why, why were you taking out college church?
It's not a why, it's a, it's the regulations, the proposed regulation.
Oh, I, yeah, I know, but I know you helped write them, so I was wondering if there was, you know, what the input was to take all those buildings away, you know, because if you build, what this regulation is saying is if you build those there, now that they're not in the paragraph, it's gonna render the business that's, they're used, that spoke to in this section, non-conforming, which means it's not allowed, right?
Speak to the commission, sure.
Just speaking to everybody, sorry. I don't mean to put you out, I just know you're, you know, you're the ZBA.
It's, it's a very valid point, and I don't know what the, how the commission feels about it.
I just feel like, you know, these, you know, there's a lot being inundated with a lot of information and changes right now, and, you know, every, some of these changes, I think alone, should have their own, a public hearing.
We are having a public hearing, Tyler, thank you.
No, no, I know, I mean, I bet some of the, some of the specific, you know, there's so much information, Nancy, being thrown at us right now.
Correct, that's why I'm allowing you to speak as long as you want to, to answer all your questions.
Okay, I mean, if, uh, if there's, you know, the board and, you know, the agricultural commissioner and everybody else that's coming up, these regulations need more time, that's what I'm asking for, which is, you know, we need more time, but I'll move on to a different section, and if we have to, any of the members of the board want to ask any questions, we will go back to it, okay? I, now I want to move on to ag events, I just have so many questions. I just hope everybody can bear with me, it's a lot of stuff.
This is why the public hearing, to answer questions, Tyler.
Thank you, Nancy. I just wanted to start with, I know it's been touched upon before, but aggritivity is not a defined word in the dictionary and it's susceptible to misinterpretation by both parties, the zoning enforcement officer himself and the potential violator saying, hey, it's an aggritivity, you know? And, you know, it could exceed what is defined in aggrativities, but there's, it's such a vast pool of what a non-agricultural related use is as far as, you know, an aggritivity, because it falls under the aggritivity permit, and that's in a small scale farm event. So, and also, I mean, what would, you know, does anybody have any thoughts on that to the board?
Well, I think I would, um, probably ask the chairman of the agricultural commission to respond to that question.
May I ask him?
I will, thank you. Would you like to respond, Dr. Mardeski?
Absolutely, I would like to respond. We took a lot of those terms out, in fact, aggritivity is one of the words, because it was agricultural engagement. Our legal counsel said, look, you can't use words like that, like activity, because it's not, it's not an addiction. Excuse me, Dan Mardeski, 21 Buckley Highway, chairman of the egg commission. So, I'm not sure what copy you've got.
Well, I just.
Or what copy was the final product, but activities, if it's not a defined term, it shouldn't be in there.
Well, I, the only question I have is because it's on the permit, it's an activity permit, can I have a copy of the permit?
Can I default to legal counsel?
Certainly, please. Name and, uh, name and address, please?
Name and address.
Lawrence Foe, 27 Lakeshore, Florida. I pro bono consult with the egg commission, giving them some legal advice. The, originally they had used a lot of words that are not real words, and I said that can't be done, it's not legal, you can't do it, you can't defend it in court. So, the compromise I think that was made is, is the legal term was put and then parentheses or quotations were used just to give the feeling behind it. That's not the legal definition. What's in quotations and what's in parentheses is not what's being used, it's the actual legal definition.
So, in your opinion as a counsel, that this is a legal document?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that you, you're saying the application is a legal document?
Correct.
The, the one that says aggritivity in, in parentheses?
Quotation?
Quotations, I'm sorry, quotations.
Quotation mark.
It's okay.
But they still have.
She was an English teacher, yeah.
Tyler, if you notice, it's prefaced by agricultural activity.
Correct.
Which is, which is the legal name.
I just wanted to go over with the board in case there was any future issues, you know, from, you know, somebody having a.
Certainly appreciate that.
And the other thing I wanted to touch on, on the application was how many people are anticipated. You know, that's pretty vague.
Well, I think perhaps the farmer would know what their expectations would be, but ender B, um, we didn't go with people, we went with vehicles. I think this is just probably an estimation, because we do limit on vehicles, and, and more than 20 vehicles are expected, then they have to have a special use permit, which at which time we would indicate, probably even regulate how many vehicles at that point of people.
For a small-scale event, you're saying?
I, no, I said a large scale.
Oh, large scale, okay.
Anything under 20, you're small scale.
Um, that's another, uh, one of the bulletins I wanted to talk about. For a small-scale farm event, 20 more vehicles per event are allowed at any given time, is that 20 vehicles an hour, 20 vehicles every 15 minutes, every event?
That would be, that would be 20 vehicles at any given time.
So you're saying it could be, it could start with 20, 20 could leave, another 20 could show up, 20 could leave, another 20 could show up. Okay, the only reason I ask is because, uh, with that math, um, 20 cars, you know, at, at any single event, five people in each car would be 100, 100 people, correct? So 10 times a year, that'd be 1,000 people a year. There's four farms within a mile of my house, that's 4,000 extra people a year and 400 more cars, you know, 10 times a year. So that means every, two, two a week.
Yep.
At every farm in my house, there could be 1,000 people driving around in my neighborhood. And this is, you're, you're asking for this to be, um, allowed under a small-scale farm event with only a site plan review?
That's correct.
Correct, that was what the agricultural commission had proposed and we had agreed.
And, 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 and does anybody have any questions about that, or?
Dr. Mardeski has his hand up, did you want to respond to that?
Well, I've got a whole bunch of responses to a whole bunch of things.
You want to wait till after?
When Tyler's done dealing with what he's dealing with, give me the floor and I'll be fine.
Alright.
Okay, no problem, no problem. So I just wanted to move, uh, let me just, let me just. Alright, there's just so much information here, let me just skim through here. Okay, the small-scale event with the amplified music, I know we touched upon this earlier too, and as, like Butch said, I couldn't find the statute anywhere that said what loud volume was as far as a decibel level. And until we regulate, you know, until you guys vote on that, until the board, I'm sorry, until the board votes on this particular, uh, regulations, being so sensitive to, you know, what amplified sound can be, I feel like we should get a definitive number, so the zoning board, so the, uh, the chief and zoning, zoning enforcement officer could go somewhere, to an abutting neighbor that's complaining and say, listen, here's the decibel meter, they're underneath it, you know, so you really don't have anything to say. But, you know, vice versa, what if the homeowner says, hey, that's too loud, and the zoning enforcement officer goes out there, is it gonna be just his opinion? Or is he gonna have a decibel reader with, you know, a chart saying, this is loud music, you know, this decibel, uh, level is loud music? And then also in the small-scale events, it says low ampli, low volume amplified music, what connotates by the chart of low volume music by a decibel level, and, you know, if you were gonna exceed it. I feel like that, you know, there should be a parachute in this regulation written to protect both sides. And also in, uh, non-agricultural related use for B, a large-scale farm event, in order to satisfy conditions of a special permit, the planning and zoning commission may limit number of events per year. May limit in accordance to how many complaints you get, the zoning enforcement officer gets? Is that what that says right there?
It says they may.
They may?
So he has, they, they have the chance to say, yeah, you can't have 20 a year, you can only have five a year.
Based on what, though?
On what the commission decides is appropriate for the, the neighborhood and, and.
And the event.
And the event, so.
The health and welfare of the community.
I just think it's a little vague to, you know, as for, you know, if a, a citizen said, you know, may limit the number of events, what could you limit it to? You know, if somebody came in and asked.
It depends on what the application is, Tyler, on the location, what the event is. That's why it's a special use permit, in order to gather all the information, in order to make the right decision.
Absolutely, but in the site plan review, it will only be required if there's less than 10 events a year.
Correct.
There's a lot, there's a big scale that can be misinterpreted, along with, you know, for a small-scale event, a site plan review is only required if there are 10 a year. There's, there needs to be a site plan review for every single event, you know, for, you know, what if a child gets stung by a bee, and there's no medical protocol? You know, what if there's a fire, and there's, you know, nobody knows where to go, and nobody knows where, you know, their cars to go, or, you know, this, you know, these could turn into a disaster. You know, I just wanted to stress that to the board, and that's just a small-scale farm event. Up on a large-scale farm event, what is exactly a secondary, non-agricultural use you could rent your farm out for? I mean, there's flea markets, work parties, you know, you could have an Easter egg hunt for kids one day, and then the next weekend have a music festival with 500 people blaring music till midnight, serving alcohol.
Well, I don't know how you can get 500 people in 20 vehicles.
That's a small-scale event. On a large-scale event?
No, excuse me, large-scale.
I'm talking about a high-scale.
More than 20 vehicles are expected, but on the special use permit, I don't believe any commission would allow 500 people.
Correct, I don't either, and, and there, you know, there have been recent events that were in excess of 1,000 people, I mean, and that were-
In Stafford?
That were issued cease and desist.
In Stafford?
Yes, ma'am.
Where?
21 Stafford Street.
At one time, 1,000 people?
They were issued a cease and desist.
No, 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 I, this is one-time event, 1,000 people at a one-time event.
It was a one-time event, yes, ma'am.
And 1,000 people were at the same time.
Eight to 1,000 people throughout the day.
No, no, one time.
I don't know how many people were there at one time.
All right, this is-
But 800 people in a residential, double, single-family residential zone, I feel 800 people in one day is, you know, that's in excess of any secondary road to handle that amount of traffic.
You're incorrect on that, but that's all right, next question.
I'm sorry if you disagree with me, I'll move on, I will move on, and if anybody has any more questions about activity events, feel free to ask.
They won't ask you, sir.
Thank you. All right, I want to move on, I just have a statement now for the board to be read into the minutes. Tyler Roberts, 27 Stafford Street, Stafford Springs, Connecticut. Good evening to the members of the zoning board, and good evening to the members of the public. We've all gathered here tonight to discuss and openly express our thoughts and concerns about regulation amendments and additions submitted by the recently-commissioned Agricultural Advisory Board, the chief zoning board officer himself, and one other foreign owner from town. I've received this information directly from the chief zoning enforcement officer himself at a meeting, a videotaped meeting we had together with the current first selectman and resident trooper held 3/22/2018, which was last Thursday. At this meeting, the chief zoning enforcement officer had agreed with me, and I quote, "There are too many animals," unquote, "and only because of misinterpretation on the part of the CEO." It is my job, as a public, tax-paying citizen, to educate the zoning board to exactly what they are voting on, and the repercussions of them being misinterpreted. Not only is this proposed regulation vague, but they can also be easily misinterpreted by the chief zoning enforcement officer. The chief zoning enforcement officer had been appointed his job by our former first selectman out of desperation, who has openly admitted to the first selectman that he has currently misinterpreted the current regulations, which is causing a civil, expensive war amongst abutting neighbors who have had to live next door to a nonconforming greeting facility in a double-A, single-family residential neighborhood. So, in conclusion, I ask that this zoning board make a motion to deny, in their entirety, all the agricultural advisory board and chief zoning officers submitted regulations and put them in the manure pile, and only consider regulations submitted by elected, unbiased commission compiled of elected members, as the zoning board was, not appointed by the former first selectman at the same farm party. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mardaski?
Dave Mardaski, 21 Buckley Highway, Stafford Springs, Connecticut. Stafford Ag Advisory Commission Chairman. So, we're gonna talk about agretainment regulations, or agricultural entertainment, or agriculture engagement. Would everybody who's in favor of these regulations here for agriculture entertainment, entertainment, or engagement, raise their hands? Okay, so, those are the people who the ag commission has gone ahead and, and used over a period of time to solicit the information that we've given forth. Eight months ago, you went ahead and said to me, Chairman Rovetto, when we were working on farm stands and farm stores, you said, you need to deal with agretainment yet next, and I'm saying, okay, so, agretainment, that's a little foreign to me. What I ended up doing was I ended up soliciting the best authority I had, which was Lisa Houlihan. Lisa Houlihan is a Stafford resident, she's heavily engaged in agretainment on her farm, she's done it for a long time, she's done it in many different areas. She was our reference to go ahead and write these regulations. Why did we write these regulations? We wrote these regulations or recommended these regulations, because if the regulations are not written down, someone like Tyler can come along and say, look, you can't do that, and you're done. So, therefore, as a farming community, we decided to go ahead and give it our best shot as far as the regulations we could recommend to the zoning board. So, over a period of four months-
Six.
Six months, Lisa worked with the zoning enforcement officer, as well as the ag advisory commission. It was 12 drafts, or thereabouts, that we worked on to go ahead and present these things to the zoning board, and these were the regulations that we recommended. Now, I want to change gears for just a second. You know, next to the transfer station in the town of Stafford, there's a hayfield. And it's a big hayfield, it's a pretty nice hayfield. I picked rocks in that hayfield. I picked up hay in that hayfield. I would chase dry cows that had calved across that hayfield to a farm up on the top of the hill, where we milked 400 head of cows. We would farm that hayfield extensively. Now, it's always been a kind of a nightmare of mine, wouldn't it be really easy to plant a house right in the middle of that hayfield? And rest assured, sooner or later, that's gonna happen. That's gonna happen to agriculture in the town of Stafford if we don't preserve it. Now, rest assured that there's a lot of things that we do to keep that hayfield intact. So, my 92-year-old father will get out of bed, get to his walker, get from his walker to his easy chair and turn on Fox News while he took, turns, while he puts his clothes on, and then he gets to the breakfast table. Once he gets to the breakfast table, he'll get outside and get on his cabota, and if he gets on his cabota and gets to a tractor, he's out in the field at 92. Now, you can't farm 50 acres of hayfield at 92 by yourself, so, okay, so I see Franny Works going ahead and raking hay, and I say to Franny Works, I said, Franny, you getting anything for this? He said, no, I just really like doing it. I said, seriously? He said, you know, you get out there, you rake some hay, it really feels good to be out there farming. Agretainment, that's agretainment for Franny Works. Now, when my dad's gotta get the hay in the barn, he's got hay in the barn, he's gotta get it unloaded, what does he do? He calls a whole bunch of guys, the guys come out, and they unload the bales of hay. And why do they unload the bales of hay? They unload the bales of hay because that's what's gonna happen in order for him to sign their deer hunting permits at the end of the year. You want deer hunting permit to hunt deer on my property? Come unload this hay. Agretainment. Now, I'm not recommending we go ahead and popularize agretainment by going ahead and selling deer hunting permits, but that's the only way that this 92-year-old guy is gonna be able to maintain his farmland in the town of Stafford. That's the reason why we're making these agretainment regulations, because when you've got a farm, you've got to do everything possible to utilize your land in order to make the money, in order to go ahead and support that land and support that property. Now, rest assured, I mean, there's questions about Foster Hill Farm. You understand that there's two things that you need in order for massive condominium public housing, sewer and water. Those are the two things you need. You've got sewer, access to sewer, you've got an access to water, guess what? You've got, you can put in, you can put in public housing all the way down Stafford Street, nice and quiet, no problem, no donkeys, no nothing, nice and quiet. You can't have your cake and eat it too. You like agriculture? Everybody in this room says, yes, we like agriculture. The zoning board said, this is gonna support agriculture. Well, guess what? If you support agriculture, you have to support these kind of regulations. And guess what? The regulations that we put forth are not perfect, as Tyler has easily demonstrated. But at the end of the day, there are at least regulations that allow that agriculture list to at least come close. Now, Chairman Rovetto, if I may address the ag community, since I've addressed the board, since we're livestreamed on Facebook. We are going to put these agretainment, or agricultural entertainment, regulations forth to the zoning board. The zoning board is going to make a decision on what we are putting forth, and they may not approve all of it. They may go ahead and pick and choose what they're going to approve, and they may pick and choose what they're going to allow us to do, but that's their job. Rest assured that if they say, look, as engaging in agricultural entertainment, you cannot do this, or you cannot do that, you know what? I am willing, as the ag commission chairman, to support that. Because at the end of the day, I am more interested in what they're saying we can do than what we can't do, because the ag commission has stood behind the zoning board, the zoning board has stood behind the ag commission, and at the end of the day, if they say, look, the agriculture community can do this, then it's not us getting sued over it, it's them getting sued over it. They will stand behind us. They will say, look, we made this a law, we said you can do it, so you can do it. So, regardless of where they're coming from, I think the ag commission, as well as the zoning board, have done a really, really, really good job in putting our best foot forward, and that's the best we can do. There will always be people that, the regulations that we've put forward are not good enough. There will always be problems with certain aspects of it, those are the things that you go ahead and go to superior court over, or whatever, go for it. We will go ahead and hammer that. The best that we can do is what we're doing. I applaud the zoning board for grabbing the bull by the horns and going ahead and doing this, and I'm happy to part with, to be perfectly honest with you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mardaski.
You're welcome. Now, sit down now.
Speaking of agricultural regulations.
I can't hear you.
I said, speaking of the agricultural regulations, I looked for a lot of, I did some research on the noise part. And, one, on one site, I found that they, they limited the hours by saying, you can't do it from 10 o'clock at night to 8 o'clock in the morning. You might want to consider something like that, because I don't see it in here. Just to make sure that we don't get complaints from people just saying that somebody's playing loud music at 1 o'clock in the morning, you know?
We, we had discussed that. It all depended on what the agricultural activity was. If it's a wedding reception, a small wedding reception, and they get married late afternoon, of course, it's gonna go into an evening hours, so you can't say 8 to 4. If it's only a day activity, like blueberry picking, of course, you're not gonna pick at night. So, why there were not specific hours is because we do not know the specific activity until the permit is filled out. That was our reasoning.
All right, my opinion is just leaving it wide open for problems down below there. And I don't think the farmers need problems, and I don't think the board needs problems, but that's just my opinion.
Well-
That would be a special permit, though.
Right, and, and we could definitely state the hours under a special permit, we could-
Yeah, you know, I just see a potential problem, like, farmers don't need it in board, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
Another, another item is back to 7.683, that Tyler was talking about. Dave, when I asked him about it, he said if it was, if the business was there before, they'd be grant filed then, so, that's why this isn't here.
Right, the non, the non, the non-conforming by reasons of, okay.
If that's the case, then I'm fine.
Right, that's why we did not need the college church public, it's just redundant, because it's not conforming. And that's what David said, yeah.
And the existing businesses told us.
Anything else from anyone else?
Yeah, Lisa Houlihan, 4240 Springfield Road. I don't really have much to add from what David, Chairman Mardaski had said, but I just, for those that, you know, don't, that might think that we pulled a lot of this stuff out of the air, and, you know, you've all mentioned how many months we worked on this. How this whole thing started was really by a call to the Connecticut Farm Bureau to really find out, they have their ear to the ground on what communities all over the state are doing with agricultural engagement or agricultural tourism. And the first question we asked was, you know, what towns have been successful with this? What towns have given, you know, give and take between the farmers and resident, non-farming residents? And some of that, we were given, you know, half a dozen towns. David Perkins had a couple of towns that he really liked, so, when these come together, they are a mixture that's something we felt worked for Stafford, and what we have here, and the size of farms, and all that. But it wasn't just pulled out of the air, it was then tweaked and tweaked and tweaked, bringing it to our own agricultural advisory commission to ask the farmers who are in practice of doing these kinds of things. And so, that's how that all got tweaked. But one of the things I just want to bring up regarding the noise was that, that is why Dave really worked with us to give us an activity permit for things that were just part of regular farm business, so he could know about them, but without there being any fee or a lot of red tape, because U-PIC and agricultural workshops and things like that, that's regular, everyday, bottom-line farm work. It's not, you know, a wedding, it's, you know, so, we found common ground in that, and I just want everyone to know here, as much as I know that a lot of things have happened on Stafford Street, Stafford is a huge town, and there are a lot of us farming all over town, and it is a little frustrating to hear over and over again how, you know, this isn't gonna work on Stafford Street, or whatever. This is our livelihood, we have all different kinds of farms and plans, and we need the revenue streams that are out there to make it work. We have roofs to fix, we have windows that are broken. I mean, it's, it almost sounds sometimes like, you know, it's just a country flog. It isn't, and it's expensive, and we pay a lot in taxes because we have a lot of land and we have buildings. And, I mean, I really appreciate that we're getting this far, but I do want people to understand that I know you're frustrated, and Marty, I hear what you said, and I respect what you say, and Ms. Phillips, I understand where she's coming from, the change, but you also understand that it's, it's not just about Stafford Street, and it's not just, this is our livelihood, and it's important to us. And if we want Stafford to have a reputation of being a farm-friendly community, okay, we have a whole nother generation, people that are at UConn, or, I mean, the stats on young farmers coming up, taking on farming, husbands and wives, not just somebody working in a factory, or in business, or whatever. You have couples that are wanting to actually farm, they need revenue streams. It's very hard to make a living, but if you give us the revenue streams of having, you know, these small events, the large events, Dave was very, very careful in what he was comfortable with. You know, we went back and forth quite a lot, but he's the person who has to enforce it, and he has a lot of experience, and, yeah, maybe we didn't get everything we hoped for, but just know that it was this, and that's all.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
Steven Clark, 16 Clutt Road East. 25 years ago, I ran a farm, managed a farm, in summers, Christmas tree plantation, cut your own. On that farm, roughly 26 years ago, I had 300 cars in the parking lot at one time. It worked. It worked. It's on Knight District Road, Billings Road, it's no longer there. They went out of business now, being bought out. But it was an agritainment business back then. People come out, pick out your tree, bring the dog, family event. People would have tailgate party, basically, in the parking lot, getting their Christmas tree. I just wanted to say that it can work. That's all.
Thank you.
Andrea Eldridge, 27 Stafford Street. I didn't fill the room tonight with any of my friends or any of my supporters in the way that I feel. But I'm here tonight, and I would like to share with the board, and have stated for the minutes for public record, that these proposed regulations should not be approved due to them being written unethically, which I think we can all agree on, and the fact that they can be very easily misinterpreted. I firmly believe that none of the proposed regulations pertaining to business or agricultural public events be permitted in single-family residential zones where the primary use of the property is residential, defined by the town. Due to the fact that these businesses and events will cause even more encroachment issues for the neighbors and public safety issues for the public, therefore resulting in many more problems, not only for the public, but for the town as well. I will share just one of my numerous problems that I have experienced, living next to residents who continue to misinterpret the regulations, who have held and currently are advertising for holding secondary, non-agricultural events, and now serving sales of alcohol, and serving alcohol, in my double-A, single-family, residentially-zoned neighborhood. On Saturday, May 7, 2016, on my way home from work, I pulled down my street at around 3:30 PM, and much to my surprise, there were 30 to 40 cars lined on both sides of the road, directly in front of my home. As I had to cautiously maneuver around the cars just to be able to pull into my driveway, that's when I witnessed a man who had pulled up my driveway and parked, and who was urinating in my property. I was absolutely blown away, as I think all of you members of the board would be. So, of course, I went down and complained to the chief zoning enforcement officer, along with referring to a bunch of direct violation problems that I had had, and nothing was ever done about it. In fact, I was ignored, and I was brushed off. I was wondering if these regulations that you guys are deciding to pass tonight has any protection for the abutting neighbors of these residents that want to have farm-like events held on their property? Because the only thing that I could see is that they were going to take in consideration the neighbors, that Dave Perkins is going to have to deal with all of these complaints from neighbors when haunted hayrides and cornstalk mazes are going to be happening under somebody's kitchen window. I don't think that there's no abutting property limits, there's no, it has to be so far away from another person's property line. How about somebody's primary dwelling? So I'm just concerned about that. Residents in this town choose to live in residential, single-family neighborhoods because they want to get away from this commercial chaos in public events, certainly not to have businesses or public events move in next to them. I would like to ask the board members to take in consideration how they would feel if one of their abutting properties had started to hold secondary, non-agricultural events in a case that 900 to 1,000 people a day would be attending on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon that you kind of want to sit out on your front porch and relax? I was just hoping that you guys could take that in consideration before you decide to approve these regulations. I know there might be a lot of people here tonight speaking in favor of all these new proposed regulations. I personally love agritainment. I do, I think it's great. But I believe there is a time and a place for everything. And I don't believe tonight is the time to be voting on these, because they are written wrong, because they are not taking in consideration the neighbors who may possibly have problems with this. It's just throwing it all on David Perkins, saying, here, you can deal with the aftermath, let the zoning board pass these regulations, and then you deal with it. That's kind of how I feel like they're written, to take the pressure off of everybody else. And the chief zoning officer is going to have to deal with all of these precautions from passing these regulations tonight. I believe we have plenty of area in our commercially rural-zoned areas where residential isn't the primary use of the property for these type of activity events to take place. That way, they will not be encouraging people to run their business out of their residential home. Why would anybody want to move into our commercial vacancies when you guys are going to allow people to run businesses out of their residential properties? That's kind of absurd to me. Me being a taxpayer, I leave my house and go to work every day. I don't have a problem with people wanting to make a living at home, but they shouldn't do it at other people's expenses. I have nothing against farmers. We raise animals, we love animals. I have nothing against farmers, I actually respect farmers. But I will not be forced to live next to a non-conforming people who are pretending to be farmers, tractor-trailer truck deliveries, agritivity events, not in my abutting property. That is unacceptable. And I have been down to this town hall more than I ever thought I would have to. I've been down to this town hall more than I did when I built my house in this town, and that's pretty sad. It's harder for me to live in peace in this town than it was for me to build a little cabin up in the woods on Stafford Street. So as far as me being against farming and farmers, people may be picturing that, making, painting a little picture of me being against the farming community. I certainly am not. I have the highest respect for farmers in this town. In fact, my dream as a young girl was to live on a working farm. I wanted to move to Colorado, buy 100 acres, and live off of it. Instead, I ended up getting talked into buying a piece of property here in Stafford. And guess what? Here I am today, down at the town hall, defending my public right to explain to the board where I'm coming from. So needless to say, our abutting town of Summers, where I grew up, their zoning board was dealt with a very similar situation as you currently are this evening. They actually were zoned, there was a certain residence that was zoned for residential property use, but they got a special use permit, similar to the ones being proposed here tonight. Their permit approved them for private parties, events, corporate meetings, and wedding parties, all as secondary and incidental to agricultural. Due to the flood of violation complaints from the community and all the neighbors, the town had no choice but to serve a cease and desist. On October 2, 2004, Worthington Pond in Summers, they got served the cease and desist. The town of Summers had to uphold the cease and desist and was based on an overly broad interpretation of the zoning regulations. So basically, our town is already having problems interpreting the current rules and regulations. I believe that passing these rules and these new proposed regulations is going to make it much worse. Why have regulations if you're going to allow certain residents to break them? And then go and amend the regulations to suit the ones who have been breaking them? Our town has had enough problems, enough amending regulations, enough work, enough time. I give all of you members so much credit, because I know the hours that you put into this. I know the stress that this can cause, but I would like you to maybe look at our point of view, as being the abutting neighbors to a potential resident who may be thinking about having one of these events at their town, and at their property, and us being abutting neighbors. In conclusion, I urge the zoning board to make a motion to deny the submitted regulations, because they were in fact written with intent only by an advisory commission, in whom its members were not elected, like you all were, but in fact, they were appointed by a member of their own party. They have submitted these proposed regulations to only benefit themselves and their own home-run businesses, which are incidental to the use of their properties, not for the best interest of the general public or for public safety. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Can I speak more than once?
Absolutely.
Okay. Lisa Bullihan, 424 Old Springfield Road. Just to address that a little bit, there isn't any straight agricultural zoning in Stafford, to my knowledge. I think that's kind of a big thing that Myron is on his wish list, right, Myron? So even though some of us have property, I have a neighbor next door that has like a couple hundred acres, it's still residential triple A. So there's no such thing as just straight, you know. So the whole idea that, you know, and I do understand that somebody could manipulate these things, and maybe they've got, I don't know, was it five or 10 acres as a minimum for a farm? I don't really remember what that regulation is. I can absolutely see that. But regardless of whether the non-agriculturally-related uses, how it's broken into two sections, one is accessory agriculture, which is related to agriculture, non-agriculturally-related uses, from the get-go, even before the commission was formed, I've sort of been in people's ears about the fact that U-Pic and certain activities, agricultural engagement, is part and parcel of farming, okay? U-Pic, or, you know, some activities, and I'm not putting this in the same category as a wedding. I totally understand that if, you know, there, we call this the quagmire. I was reluctant in the beginning to even go down this path, but it was asked of us. And if we didn't go down the path of putting our input in and collecting what worked for towns in Connecticut, who knows what we would have ended up with? But I just want you to understand that if you decide to go into this whole idea of, you know, stopping this process of non-agriculture, because you're worried about big functions or whatever, you really have to consider the fact that everything here that is agriculture-related and the accessory agricultural activities is not something that should be, I mean, if it's not regulated now, we're understanding, it's not allowed. So are you going to tell people that they can't have anyone come and pick their blueberries this year, or, you know, or strawberries, or whatever it is? I mean, I respect that everybody has a different opinion, but you also have to understand that there are two ends of the spectrum. There may be people who are trying to work something, and, you know, that, somebody going on your driveway at a party could be your next-door neighbor, whether you're a farmer or not. I mean, this is, I mean, if it wasn't zoned, I'm not sure how, if there wasn't zoning, I'm assuming, Dave, that that would have been against regulation. If there were no zoning regulations for agritainment, and they're having an agritainment party, what, how does that affect what this document is? That's what I don't understand.
Well, I think you're correct in terms of if it's not permitted, it's prohibited.
Right. And that's what we're sort of dealing with right now.
Correct.
So that, that's just.
And people, people doing activities that are not fee-based can do that.
Right.
I mean, you get to use your land the way you want to use, you know, if you want to have a pig roast and have 30 of your friends over, I'm not going to come over and regulate that.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. That doesn't really, I'm not really understanding how that relates to having these in place to protect, and they do protect not only neighbors, they also protect the farm owner and the person who is hosting events, whether small or large, that they have that in place. But again, it's really important that anything that is agriculturally-related to the farm is not thought about as something extra. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Lisa.
John Wilson, 119 Stafford Street. You know, what's being tossed out here tonight should have been hashed out over the last eight months, when the Farm Advisory Commission, Ag Commission, had their open meetings, public meetings, and discussed this stuff. I'm not on the Ag Commission, I've been to most of the meetings. And there was never anybody coming and complaining or putting their two cents in to come up with these regulations. And when we all think back to the very first meeting up at the Senior Center, my attorney sat down there and made a statement that anything you do on your land that is not in regulation is illegal, basically saying that all farmers have been illegal for 200 years in Stafford because we didn't have a regulation. And this was the result of the Ag Commission working with you folks to come up with something. And all the meetings I went to, I never heard any of these complaints that are hearing tonight. I live on Stafford Street. My wife's family farmed on Stafford Street for 101 years, and they're still doing it, okay? And I don't see these things going on, and I go up and down that street every day, more than once. So I think that, you know, time was given to air these things out. And I don't think tonight is, is a forum for it.
Well, the forum for the public hearing, it is, but we have had our meetings with the agricultural advisory, and we've worked on the regulations, we've worked back and forth. And this board is very open to anyone who comes to our meetings to ask questions at that time. But we don't see anyone but the people who are involved with working on the regs. We would love to see the public come to every meeting, so that it doesn't come to a public hearing that's.
But every Ag Commission meeting was a public hearing. And it was put on Facebook.
Right. Our meetings with them were not a public hearing. They were just our meetings, and the public is certainly welcome to, to speak. Someone else had their hand up, I saw. Tyler, you had quite a bit of time, I need to have other people.
I have a simple question.
Certainly.
My name's Deb Willicki, I'm on 118 Bell Road Street, and it's about the activities permit, Dave. You have on here CSA, Community-Sourced Agriculture, considered, you need an activity permit. So is it, could you have one, would it be one permit for the whole season, or for the whole time?
There's no charge for the permit.
Right, right. But with the CSA, we have pickup on Wednesday, pickup on Saturday, and then we have like larger events from time to time, and I don't think it's ever more than 20 cars, so.
But we wouldn't need a permit for every one of those things, it would just be like a, just.
Just a blanket, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
And could we, could it be just the one for the whole, for all the time, and just come to you if we're going to change it?
It's annual, isn't it?
Or is it annual? Would we have to visit you every year and let you know, yeah, we're doing this again?
Only garden, community garden.
No, we had, I think we, I think we tried to put some dates, description of events, plural.
Yeah, you've got dates is plural, so.
Whatever's recurring.
Yeah, ballpark kind of what we're going to be doing for the season? Okay.
I think, you know, a lot of it, from my point of view, for those sort of activities are so, I know what's going on. If I get a phone call, I can say, gee, I know about that, as opposed to, what's going on down? I mean, people can describe things.
Would they have to apply every year?
No, we, for those, we indicate one-time only.
One-time only permit.
So things change three years from now?
And the intention is.
Well, if it's, if there's a change, then another permit. But otherwise, if the event is the same.
But how are you going to know if there's changes? You give them the permit and don't go and check them every year, how are you going to know it's changed?
Well, I think it probably needs to be an annual, I think.
If there's no fee, you just come down and say, here's what we're doing this year, no change.
Okay, so I know there's a lot of U-Pic farmers in town, so it'd be good, we're going to have to let them know somehow, because they have to do one of these little permits
Thank you.
Yes, I can't, hello.
Tracy Canister, 81 Buckley Highway. I just wanted to make a quick comment that the Ag Commission and the zoning board has done a really nice job trying to open the line of communication between farmers trying to open the line of communication between farmers and the CEO so that he does know what's going on in town. And I think by clarifying that, we're going to see less problems with neighbors and because everybody's on the same page. I think it's also important to recognize that not all farms look alike. I have two parcels of land in Stafford. I have 100 acres on one side of town and 22 on the other. And what I do on my 100-acre, you know, I would do different things over there than I might do on my 22-acre parcel of land where I have neighbors. My wooded section, you know, the commission may approve something that they wouldn't approve that I do on my 22 acres. So I think it's really important to understand that not all farms are the same. And I really like that part of the process is coming to the CEO and to the board and saying, hey, this is what I wanted, this is what I'm thinking I'd like to do. And then working collaboratively to say, okay, this is a good idea. Or, you know what, I don't know if that's going to work. What if we do this instead? I think that it's a very collaborative thing and I really appreciate that. So I just wanted to bring that.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, unless you have something different to add?
I just want to reiterate something.
Something different to add?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I wanted to reiterate what something said, you know, to the board, so the board knows. Like Mrs. Hulahan said, agriculture is exploding. There's two families that are completely agriculture-supporting themselves from their own property and they're public. They're part of the public, just like people that work, go home, pay their mortgage, and, you know, that's their job. And, you know, like Mrs. Hulahan said, it's such a booming industry and it's just growing exponentially and we have to write new regulations. Just like the public that's not in the agricultural sector, as the public in the agricultural sector, nobody had gone to any of these meetings, the agricultural meetings. So I do not feel that the board is getting a correct blend of input from both sides. And that it's not appropriate at this time to accept these regulations.
Well, this is why we have the public hearing this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
We did get the indication of the public's input on these regulations. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anyone else?
Can I just say something quick? I don't think it's particularly...
Name that.
Stacy Joseph, Colette Road, right off of Stafford Street. I don't think I have something really profound to share, but just a couple of observations. What I love about the idea about events, besides the fact that it does help support the farm, for sure, is first of all, they're temporary. It's just an evening. It's just a day. Any exercising, it's just 30 minutes, you know? It's here and then it's gone. And to think like it's going to be forever and to, I don't know, to get obsessed about something that's going to be permanent when it's really just going to be here and gone is kind of an overreaction. The other thing is, you know, one of the signs of a thriving community is lots of activities, you know? I have children. And I think perhaps they're kind of unrepresentative demographic in this room. You know, we've heard from retired people, we've heard from, you know, singles. The kids, they love activities, you know? And the more the merrier. If I can march them down to the Milikowski's farm for a fun day, oh my goodness, that would be lovely. I can't think of a better way to spend a day. And I just think anything temporary is kind of a compromise, you know? We can go back to the quiet that other people like and we can have the activity for a moment or two. And that's kind of harmony. That's everyone living together, doing their thing peacefully.
Thank you very much. If that is it, I will...
I'd like to add one more thing.
Certainly.
I know that Lisa had mentioned that she had Andrea Eldridge, 27, Stafford Street. I know that Lisa, I think she is still here, yep. She mentioned that she kind of touched base with what other towns have done in the past and how they were successful or not. Like I mentioned, the town of Summers, they were not successful with Worthington Pond Farm because of it was encroaching on neighbors, which I believe that if something isn't done with how you go about getting a permit for one of these events, and I agree with what Stacy says. I think these are great events for children. I mean, I remember growing up, going to corn mazes and picking my own blueberries in summers, but it didn't encroach on abutting neighbors. So I don't feel like these people should be able to move in next door to residence and open up this commercial type of business. I don't believe that's farming. Real farmers are farming. They are out there getting their hands dirty and farming. They are not holding these public events. They don't have time to hold public events. They are working farmers to put food on their table for their families. They are not busy going around hosting public events, charging fees? No farm back in the 1800s would ever charge fees. This is ridiculous. This is like to run a business out of your home in a residential area. You are, these regulations are posing to let this happen anywhere. And I don't agree that this should be something that could move in next to residence. And Stacy did mention that it's just a one-time thing. Well, yeah, it's just a one-time thing, but for your large-scale events, I think David Perkins here, our CZO, has said that, well, there is no, I mean, they can have as many as they want, large scale. And the neighbors don't have anything to say about it. There's no special use permit. There should be a public hearing if somebody wants to be a wedding venue, wouldn't you say? They could have a wedding venue one weekend, the next weekend they could have a festival.
The large has to have a special permit. We would regulate.
You would regulate that, so a public hearing would be held? Okay, it said may regulate, late, so I misinterpreted that.
No, 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 we may, we may regulate different stipulations.
I think that needs to be added to these regulations.
That's part of, that's part of our work. That's what we do. If you understand, if someone applies for a special use permit, this means that this is totally different than anything else this board has had before them. Or it's probably not in a location that we would think was the best. So they would come before us and say why? Where, when, why? And it would be the work of this commission to decide if it's a proper location, if it's a proper time, if it's the proper hours. We would determine at that point. It wouldn't be a carte blanche. Then we may put regulations and limits on some of the applications requests. That's what the "may" is. Doesn't mean that we have to, we will, or we won't. We may, depending on each individual application.
Thank you for explaining that, Nancy, because I took that as you may.
And it's always a public hearing.
Yeah, I said thank you for explaining that because I took that as "may," like shrug your shoulders, like, hm, I might, you may do something or you may not.
No, 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 no. We, this commission has the responsibility to look at the whole of the application, the purpose of it, where it will be. As I said, and the purpose, perhaps we have to regulate the hours. We have to regulate many things. We may say, you may do this, but you can only do this on Monday, Tuesday. Or you can only do it two hours a day. I mean, there's, we have the right under a special use permit to put regulations or stipulations. But a special use permit has to have a public hearing so the public can give us input on what they believe the application is good for.
Thank you for verifying that. I just hope that you guys will take in consideration the abutting neighbors to these activities that they like to be called.
Okay.
And maybe what would make your job a lot easier is maybe all the abutting neighbors would have to agree in order for this to happen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Milikowski?
Yeah, Cora Milikowski, 21 Stafford Street. I've been just listening and I don't know, Angie and Tyler, what you think I do all day long. You know, I do have some of my greenhouses. And if you want to see what's in there, please come out.
Absolutely.
I can show you the thousands of geraniums I have planted by hand. I've filled pots by hand. I've got tomatoes going. I've got calipsoa. I've got angelina burgonia. A 400 hanging baskets. Besides taking care of my animals every day, 7:00 in the morning, feeding them, cleaning them, maintaining my farm. I do a lot every day. I don't go away. I don't take vacations. You know, I like my farm and I like to be there and I like to work. And my hands are dirty.
And you have no permits for everything you have.
Excuse me. Excuse me. He's talking to the commission. Not to you, Tyler. Excuse me.
He did refer to us. I'm sorry, Nancy.
No, excuse me. You are out of order. Thank you. Mr. Milikowski has the floor.
I'm done.
Are you done? Yes, sir.
Don Bradley, 144 South Road. Really don't want to say anything, but my family's been in this town for over 200 years and most of the time it's farms. She brought up the part about that that isn't the way farms were in the 1800s. You're right. Things have changed, just like we didn't have cars back 200 years ago. Farming is tough and that's why farms are grumbling as we speak. Connecticut used to be a huge farming town. Dave's family used to run a milk farm. My family used to run a dairy farm. Both of them have gone out of business because it's so expensive to run a farm. So part of that, wait. Mrs. Hulahan had said is that in order for us to keep our farms so we don't sell it to development and try to keep our land because it's something that our family has grown up and loved and wanted to keep in our family is that we try to come up with ways to make a little extra money so we can pay the taxes and stuff like that. Farming is part of this town. We don't want to interrupt things, but we want to keep our rural setting. If you let it build up to, you know, housing and stuff like that, we'll be just like Hartford or Manchester burning. Do we want that? Part of agriculture is to try to keep our rural roots. That's all this is about. All we're trying to do is preserve what we have. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Is there something different?
I'd just like to answer, I'd just like to answer to something that was brought up previously. Lisa Hulahan, 424 Old Springfield Road. I'd just like to bring up the point about Worthington Pond Farm because Worthington Pond Farm has come up in more than one meetings about being the worst-case scenario. Worthington Pond Farm is in my neighborhood. I walk it, okay? There were some people who were upset about it. They did have the cease and desist. But there were a whole lot of us that took it really badly, that they got shut down. It's a beautiful farm. I know people who had their daughters, Jack and Jill. People went there. They did a lot of charity work there. You know, and I understand there's two sides to every story, but I just, I just want to make that known that, yes, they did get the cease and desist. They now just do charity because, and luckily they can afford it and it didn't become 40 lots or 20 lots or whatever. It's the person that owned it could afford just to use it for charity. But there are many of us in that neighborhood who really felt terrible that they went out of business and that was no longer available to us.
Thank you. All right, I guess at this time, I'm calling for a motion.
To?
To either close the public hearing or to table it or to deny it.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before I call for a vote, the motion to close the public hearing, is there any further discussion? Or the commission, or the public?
Well, outside of the Hatfield and McCoy thing on Stafford Street, this is for the town, the children for the town. And outside of these three paragraphs, I mean, the rest of it's pretty cut and dry. We need to start, it's a start, okay? It's just a start, because right now we don't have any.
That's fair.
So it's something to build on.
Okay. Let me then call for a vote and then we will bring up in our regular meeting the decision regarding this public hearing. So all those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. We will now call the regular meeting to order and I'll establish a quorum. Gene Julian, to my left, Kathy Bakayaki, myself, Nancy Rovetto, and Ron Hull, who has not had a cookie yet, and Cindy Ron Hull. Oh, okay.
Ron, eat the cookie.
Eat the cookie.
We're going to open up the meeting by reviewing the minutes.
You're still on camera.
The smell is wonderful. If anybody wants a cookie, please... This is a regular meeting, so please feel free to go.
I got mine too.
They're going to review the minutes from February 13th, which as usual were excellent. I really couldn't find a thing that I felt was incorrect or inaccurate.
I just have one comment.
Certainly.
Not to perpetuate the issue on Stafford Street that I'm going to have.
Page seven.
Under new and other business, where there was discussion about a lawsuit filed by Andrea Eldridge. And there was a comment that said it is hoped that Milikowski will file for intervener status. Could we just clarify that? Because I thought I was pretty clear that I was not in favor of that.
You were not, correct. But it was
It was...
part of the minutes, though.
Right. Oh, it is...
You're asking to strike that?
Not to strike it. I just like the clarification that there was an opposing viewpoint among the commissioners.
Not everyone hopes that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I do. I'm just trying to think how I should say it.
Now you want to transpose it.
How would you like the word, Cindy?
Opposition from the board.
Or just discuss that they may, may apply for intervener?
Yes, it was discussed.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
That may file for intervener status, yeah.
I have a question. No, I wasn't here. I apologize for that. But on page three, third paragraph from the bottom, Nancy Rovetto said, "Dave Palmberg, an alternate member who could not be there this evening, had recommended adding some butchers or other additional landscaping to Middle River Drive's side of the property as it was somewhat plain on the outside." Guy Hesketh said that they plan, and in fact, Obushan, plans for some white pines in the back corner, some red maples along the side. And they also want to keep as many of the front trees as possible and will add some shrubs to screen the parking. And I've noticed all the trees were cut. And I've talked to the chairman and it appears they had to do that for the widening of Middle River Drive.
Did they cut the trees on the, on Stafford, West Stafford?
Middle River Drive side of the...
The Middle River Drive side, the right side where they said they had to make the V opening of State DOT.
For the truck radius.
For the truck radius. So I'm assuming they cut those trees along Middle River Drive in order to widen and also to put in the underground electrical?
I believe that's true.
Okay.
So if you would, Dave, next chance you get, talk to Guy and mention that he said that he was going to keep as many trees in the...
So we'll get some more trees.
That when they're done, obviously they've got a lot of work there to do. I think the comment made by our alternate is crucial. I mean, Dave Palmberg said that that is so visible, and he's absolutely right, from such a long distance, that we've got to have proper screening there and we have to make sure we stay on top of them.
Are there any other corrections or discussions on the minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 13th, 2018?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And abstain.
The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action, the public hearing items from the zoning regulation changes. I just wanted to note that I appreciate everyone's input this evening. This is what the zoning commission needs to hear, the opinions and what is concerning the citizens of Stafford. I think, as I noted previously, we have worked very hard with the Agricultural Commission and they were open meetings. And we had always hoped that all people would be attending those meetings just so they could also be aware of the work we're doing and how we're trying to do it and to give us input also at that time. Some comments were made tonight that were probably not as nicely put as they should be. The Agricultural Commission was appointed non-politically. It was appointed regarding an overview of different citizens of town, farmers, the businessmen, and regular people. It was not one political party over another. And I think the difference in the makeup of the commission absolutely helped in their work. So the business people understood where the farmers were coming, the farmers... So the business people understood where the farmers were coming, the farmers understood where the residential people were coming, and that's, I think, how we came to write the best regulations that we could at this time.
Now, let me add a little bit to that.
Absolutely.
Uh, we needed, we wanted the agricultural commission to be formed because we realized so much of what was going on wasn't in the regs and that old thing that if it's not there, it's not legal. So we had to come up with something and, and this is, I think, a long journey we're all on. We have to do it. It's necessary. And obviously, the board's problem and difficulty is balancing the needs of everyone. That's our mission and we do the best we can.
As far as the agricultural activities, it seems, as I've been sitting here thinking, most of these activities seem to me to be seasonal. Um, mostly, uh, the spring and summer, maybe if someone has a pumpkin farm and you can go pumpkin picking and, um, I don't know of many places that will like have sleigh rides or something like that. So, uh, the impact of these activities, I would hope, would not be intrusive in anyone's way of life. Um, but that's something that we can't foresee until we get these regulations. And, and, you know, as Jean just said, without these regulations, we don't have any rules and people can actually do what they want and even though there'll be consequences, they still will do it. Once someone has a rule, then they understand what they can and can't do. It, it just, uh, makes everything calm. So, um, I, I'd like to hear from the, the rest of the, the commission, but as far as the agricultural activities, uh, I'm in agreement that, that perhaps we should go along what is written here and hopefully that it, they will work well and if there's any problems, this commission is always open to working within and, um, Dave Perkins is always open to it too, but we won't know if they won't work unless we use them. Uh, the on-line of sales, um, and repair, I think we answered everybody's questions on whose responsibility, either the, the zoning board of appeals or, um, the zoning board as far as a service station or a gasoline. And the update, um, on the, the in-law apartment is one that I really, really wanted because of, um, when the state asked us to have these little houses for caregivers or if an elderly parent needs a caregiver to live there or whatever. So we thought at the time, why not use a vacant in-law apartment instead of having to revert it back to just a, a single family home? So I'm really thrilled with that part of the, um, in-law apartment where we changed that regulation. So I'm done with my long spiel. Anybody else want to chime in?
I'll just jump back in and, and, and agree with you on a couple of things, Nancy. I, I mean, to me, our job, we have to simplify. We have to get rid of the, the unenforceable parts in our, in our book. And the idea of coming back in with an in-law apartment every three years per, per minute, I mean, I would suspect no one ever did it or, you know, one out of 100 might have done it. So an unenforceable thing, I think that change is a great change and the idea, as you said, Nancy, you're not going to tear that extra room down. If you turn your two-car garage into an apartment for your mother-in-law, you're not going to tear it down or bring it back to a garage.
Uh, according to the regulation now, that's what you would have to do.
And we have required that. So again, it's a silly requirement we have to change. And, and as far as the gas stations, I mean, as Mr. Perkins said, couldn't build one anywhere in Stafford. So when we see something like that, it's got to get fixed as fast as we can.
Wow, anybody?
Kathy? As we've said before, this is a living document and when changes have to be made, people can come to us and we can talk about changing them. So these are not set in stone by any means.
Good point, Kathy. Good point.
Could I, could I just make a comment? Um, some of you may or may not know, I was on the commission previously and then I was off for a couple of years and just came back at the end of November. I was not on the commission at the time that you all got involved with the agricultural , um, committee to assist, but I have to say that, um, from all the years that I was on the commission, this was probably the first time I've seen really a group of experts come together to provide guidance and recommendations to this commission. We, we are tasked with every aspect of, of regulating this town that you can imagine and we all have certain expertise and some of us even play a little bit with farming, but I think that the expertise that this commission, the extra commission brought in was phenomenal. I wish we had more opportunities and hope we have more opportunities to do that in the future. And I just want to say too, I couldn't say it any better than Mr., um, Mr. Bradway said, the whole, the whole changing of the agricultural community and trying to maintain our farming history in this town, it's just becoming harder and harder. And I think anything that we can do to, um, to promote people's use of farming so that the farmland stays in front of land is, really needs some serious consideration.
Right. And I don't see that it's any different that we now allow in-home occupation. You're living in your home in a residential area and you can have a beauty shop. I, I mean, there's, so you live in the farm, you're farming, so you're doing a little extra things to gain, gain more money. So it, it's, it's all, and especially when Prab commented so wonderfully on what we were doing here. I have never in all my years on this board had any response from Prab regarding what a great job that this is, commission was doing, but you know what? It wasn't just this commission, it was everybody. So I was so thrilled with this, this report. So is there any more discussion on the, the board before I call for a, um, a vote?
I, I would just say that the, um, P O C D, Plan of Conservation and Development, does talk about preserving agriculture. Because of our limited amount of state-designated farmland soils, the town should be very careful about allowing development in these areas. Unfortunately, it's simply because farms are the most easily developed that they frequently are. That's from the, the P O C D.
P O C D is our bible in effect. It's done every 10 years. It's the Plan of Conservation and Development the town has to do. A bunch of volunteers worked incredibly hard to put it together, to send it to the state and it becomes our bible of what we look back on as a guiding force for us. Uh, and, and one, one more comment I want to make is that I think, I, I know, I don't know other towns very well and I don't know if we're unique in this, but our farms are in residential areas. They all are. And if you look back far enough, it was basically all farms. And we have a hodgepodge now, houses in industrial areas, many houses, uh, farms in, in residential areas, and that's something, a problem and issue we're going to work with forever, I think. And, and I just think it's something we have to, uh, find solutions for and, and compromises every time we can. And I would like to make a motion, the discussion's over.
Mm-hmm. I believe it is.
I would like to make a motion to approve the regulation changes for accessory structures, gasoline sales, agricultural tourism and in-law apartments with these changes. Under 3.17A, we have to change 7.2F to 7.4F and under accessory buildings, 7.6C7, the word dwelling has to be removed.
Is there a second to the motion?
Right to the motion.
Fine.
And that's in accordance with the Plan of Conservation.
Yeah, and these changes are consistent with the Plan of Conservation Development as stated on the record and will it take, take effect April 12th, 2018? Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Is there a second to this?
Can we add to the motion?
You want to make an amendment to the motion?
I do. Just on paragraph B.
Under which one?
On large-scale farm events. Um, where it says, um, getting written notice, noise levels and other factors that are causing a nuisance. I, I don't really want to wait for it to become a nuisance. I think we should put a, and again, it's just my thought, that we should put a curfew on the, the event for, for your, your music, for your loud noises. So at 9:00 PM.
Well, that would be, as I explained before, Ron, under a special use permit, depending on what the, the activity is, that's where you would regulate it.
So each event's going to be on its own merit?
Correct.
So I think, look at, look at your, um, are you looking at B on the, under three?
I am.
Under three, on the second page.
Loud vibration and noise?
Yeah. So then halfway down, "The proposed activity used regularly employees to use an amplified sound system, there shall be a soundproofing plan in place that confirms, confirms compliance." You could put it right in there if you wanted, so.
So a curfew could go there.
I, that's where I would put it.
Curfew deemed by the CEO?
Well, I mean, look at the last line too. It says, "The commission may impose additional restrictions on the use of it determined after a hearing for which the owner of the farm was given written notice the noise levels are causing a nuisance to nearby property."
But that's what I'm saying. Rather than have the neighbor get worked up and come down, they should know right up front what they can and can't do as far as time of, time of the month.
What we, what we set that with the special use permit though?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm asking.
We don't have to put a time.
In the regulation.
In the regulation. We would regulate it by each special use permit, Ron.
On its own.
Based on what the activity is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Sure. Okay. So, uh, the motion stands as it is. Do we get a second?
I'll second it.
You second? Any further discussion from the committee? Hearing none. All those in favor of the, the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. The motion, the regulations are approved. Thank you, everyone. Now I'd like to welcome our new commission alternates. Now, Butch, you're not new, Dave, you're not new, but I'll say you're new.
Please take some of these home. We don't know what they're going to wind up.
You better eat them or, everybody grab a cookie on your way out. Maybe, uh, maybe I'll sign. Okay. All right. Butch. Butch.
Hey, it's still a public meeting, everyone.
Excuse me. We are still meeting. Butch, please sit down. Butch, sit. Please, everybody take one. It's, um, whoever didn't.
You have to.
Chris, you're, there you are. I've been looking this way all night, not that way.
14 Belros.
So.
Belros, B is in void. One word.
Just checking with the babysitter to be just a moment.
Uh, are you ready?
Don't ignore us.
No, no, I don't want to because this is relative to you.
Okay, very good.
Okay. So on behalf of the commission, I would like to thank Butch, Michael, Christopher and Dave for your willingness to become alternate members of this commission. At this time, I'm glad to take the opportunity to familiarize you with the purpose of this commission. Butch and Dave are familiar, but you are new to this commission. As our statement of purpose reads, "We are responsible for the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Stafford. We are charged with encouraging appropriate use of land, avoid congestion in the streets, adequate provision for transportation, water, sewage, schools and parks, and our regulations have to follow what is allowed under section eight of the Connecticut State statutes. So as we are a combined planning and zoning commission, we not only work on zoning issues, but must review the Plan of Conservation and Development to plan for the future by constantly reviewing the regulations to ensure we are following the plan. We have worked over a year reading every word in our regulations and have deleted outdated regulations, reworked some and promulgated numerous as the town is constantly evolving. On social media lately, there is a misconception that large companies have not moved here and that this is due to zoning regulations. This is not true. Large companies conduct market analysis studies and these studies drive where the companies locate. Of course, the zoning regulations, we do play a role, which is why the board has raised the square footage allowed for retail business to 60,000 square feet. But remember, even though this is another misconception, there is no limit on the size of commercial or industrial development. And we are getting slammed on social media constantly that we won't allow big businesses in. And we do. There is no limit on the size of a commercial building or an industrial building. It's retail. So my goal, and the goal of this commission is always and has been since I've been chairman, to meet the Economic Development Commission, our large and small business owners, the Board of Selectmen and the public, to discuss what businesses the EDC or the Board of Selectmen have contacted or worked with and what the Planning and Zoning Commission relative to our regulations can do to help. So just recently, I met with First Selectwoman Mary Meadow to discuss a meeting with the EDC and the Board of Selectmen. And, uh, we have scheduled this special meeting as a first step in working together. But unfortunately, the First Selectman and, and I determined that we would just have, uh, the elected members at the first meeting just to get to understand our roles and responsibilities and as we go forward, hopefully we can have a standing meeting with everyone. We wanted to keep the first meeting small and very short because we're going to meet after the Board of Select meeting next Tuesday night, which may go late because of budget. So we're going to try to keep it very low-key, but we certainly will keep all of your alternates up on what's going on.
Is it, is it a special planning and zoning meeting?
It's a, no, it's a special meeting with the, um, that Mary Meadow is putting on.
Right after the town meeting.
After the town meeting.
So it's going to be all you guys, so it's a meeting?
It's a special meeting. It will be minutes.
So it's a public meeting? Yes.
Yes. But you want to come, you can, but it's not going to be part of the discussion at this point. That's what the First Selectwoman. So it is important that as members of the PZZ, we are legally bound to enter all public hearings with an open mind. We cannot do anything that can be construed as prejudging something that comes before us. So based on that fact, and this is very important, Michael and Chris, is we as elected members and alternates cannot ourselves solicit businesses because that would be a prejudgment on our vote if you were to sit on the board. Do you understand? And that's, that's by law. If we are prejudged, then we would have to, to recuse ourselves from any vote on it if we went out and... So now the, the regular meetings, um, you know, and if anyone is absent, I will ask one of the members to sit and you will be a full voting member if you are asked to sit in the absence of another member with all the rights of a voting member. But the procedures for the public hearing, and you gave me an eyebrow on that, has changed.
Okay.
Okay?
When did it change?
This is by law, that the procedures for a public hearing are now different unless an alternate is seated on the commission for an elected member who is absent. Alternates are considered the public and may not speak.
Where'd she know that?
This is from Mark Brant.
Alternates act as part of the commission, but if they're not seated, they cannot vote.
Correct.
They can ask questions, the same as the other.
No, this is, this is specific and Jean can back me up. They cannot speak. You are then part of the public. No, Mark Brant.
No, I'll, I'll get you Mark Brant. That's, that's not Mark Brant.
He had a workshop.
Alternates, you know, alternates can participate just as the board should. The whole, the whole concept of it is that Jean might drop dead any moment and you can jump into Jean's.
Right, right. They, they cannot be part of the discussion once the public hearing is closed.
Not once it's closed. Not once it's closed.
You didn't let me finish.
No, I'm sorry. No, but he, when he wanted to ask a question before you opened it to the public, you should have let him tell.
I should? I'm sorry.
Well, wait, wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. I went to a seminar with Brant's.
And he said no.
And he went crazy over that.
He said it was changing.
He just screamed it from the podium. No.
He'll always, he'll always agree with us.
Well, get him, get him to agree because that's not what he said at the seminar.
There might have been a misunderstanding.
No, no, it wasn't because.
Because if the public hearing's closed, I can't have any discussion.
I'll, I'll email it to you. Okay. Send, send his thing and then I'll talk to him too because, and I have it written down from him.
Okay.
He did a handout.
I know.
And, and he said it very clear.
But he has, he has a couple of written documents where it clearly says.
written down from him.
Okay.
He did a handout.
I know.
And, and he said it very clear.
But he has, he has a couple of written documents where it clearly says, "The alternate should participate all the way up to deliberation."
So he's like some lawyers where he goes both ways?
Not seated.
You know what? I think we need a third opinion here. I think I'll...
We should get one.
And, and the whole point, Nancy, is...
We know a lawyer.
The whole point is that to ask questions, is to ask questions as if I was seated at the appropriate time while you're on that top. That's all.
And we thought that...
And you can wait, too. If you wanna, if that's how you wanna run the meeting, that's fine, but it's always been the process.
I was just trying to run it legally.
But case in point, when we were asking about the security system up to hospital, I mean, you, you spent a lot of time on that. And I just feel the questions for me, David, what do you think about it? At that time, you were John Q. Public, and you weren't even on the board, right? Right? I mean, it was a month ago, two months ago.
Well, I think, I understand. I know it used to be the way that Dave and Dave just described it. And let me just take a look. I mean, it may have, there may have been a change or an amendment to the statute, but I'll take a look at that before our next meeting.
Well, I just, it was, right, it was in writing by Mark Brants. And, and that's what got poor Doug Facet all upset when we had to change that.
Well, no, he was trying to ask, he was speaking during the discussion after the public hearing was closed, as an alternate.
Yeah, I had to close him down.
Well, he was trying to speak as a mem, as a student.
And we used to allow it, and no, that's not legal.
You can't do quite that.
Right. So, I mean, we're just trying to find out what is the legal interpretation on...
But that's the only reason I tried to ask a question at that point.
Right. And, I'm sorry, Dave, but I'm just trying to go with what we were told previously. So that'll be good to double and triple check that.
Yep, we'll do that.
We should, because we have knowledge in the, in the public. We could be able to...
Because, as you just said, if you're gonna be a seated member, well, that's during a regular meeting, not a public hearing. This is, this is, wait, let me finish.
During a public hearing.
Let me finish. During a regular meeting, they, they, I shouldn't say that, um, some former chairman, being very nice, during just a regular meeting, would not let anybody speak.
That's up to the chairman.
No one. That's up to the chairman, which is correct, which was absolutely wrong because if an alternate was sitting out there and they were not allowed to speak, and the following meeting, they had to sit for something that was discussed two meetings ago, then they, you know, they were not up on it, and you would have to not vote on that issue for two more weeks. So maybe that is the, the difference?
I'll, I'll get you mic stuff and, and talk better.
Because I was told I couldn't let the public speak at a regular meeting, and I said, oh, no. I know they can, correct?
It's the chairman's expression.
It's up to you. You don't have to let them talk.
I can run the meeting any way I want.
It's not required.
The danger would only be if it was the next meeting and someone starts talking about something we had, a public hearing we had closed or something, then you get into some tricky stuff where you're gonna shut them down and say, no, we can't take any new information.
No, that's only if it's table. If it's closed, it's closed, and we voted.
But, yes, and if...
If we voted. If we didn't vote, yeah, right.
Yeah, but there are times the chairman has to shut people down, but it's tricky.
Well, I'm good. That's clarified.
Can I ask a question? Just, I, you're Chris Joseph, right?
Correct.
I, Michael, what's her last name?
Delano.
Delano?
I was saying, I was saying Delano. Delano, okay.
D-L-A-N-O.
Just call him Mike.
So anyway, did you get in your packet? This is from Dave. He did a great job. He put in, I was even reading it, so to make sure.
Do they got a copy of the regs?
Yes.
Everybody's all set there. Is everyone sworn in?
Sworn in, sworn out.
Really?
Sworn out, alternates? No.
Have you been sworn in by the tumbler?
You need to go see Karen.
Have you been sworn in by the tumbler? Have you, Butch?
Oh, yeah.
He got me sworn in.
Yes.
I checked.
Oh.
Well, you've been sworn in at every other commission. You're sworn in.
I did twice. She said no.
I looked it up and I see.
She's full of beans.
She must forgot you were an alternate.
I did it twice. No, I called her specifically and asked her if I had to do it again. She said, yeah.
I have a cookie on that one, Butch. Okay. Just to make sure, because I can't see too much, just one.
We made a mistake once in the past, long ago. Someone receded that it shouldn't have been because they weren't sworn in, and that's a big issue with it.
So again, Dave, you...
I'll have to check her records.
Right.
I'll go see Karen tomorrow.
Say Karen tomorrow, see Karen sometime.
I made a special trip to do it. I like that.
So, um...
You're sworn in. Twice.
So the, the next item on the agenda is the campground renewals. Roaring Brook, Sun Valley, Reddington Rock, and Mineral Springs. Dave?
Long list of contracts.
We got them all in sync.
Yeah, I have one comment.
I don't really have any comments. I haven't gotten any complaints, um...
But none of them?
No, they all said in chats. I, I, Sun Valley seems to be sort of on the edge occasionally in terms of what they're planning on doing.
They also didn't sign their application.
You're right.
They did not sign that this is not a, we can't, we can't...
I, I live near Sun Valley.
I think they did it over...
Nothing's been signed. It is here, but it's not...
I just, I just have a concern about the two campers set up in the parking lot, front parking lot. That's not part of the campground.
Where's that?
That is not part of the campground.
Where's that? Sun Valley?
Well, there's two in the parking lot. There's two or three in the lawn area behind the restaurant. That's a separate piece of property. It's just not the campground.
That isn't the campground.
They have people living there year-round. And campers. There's a guy there right now with satellite do stuff on his trailer and propane tank. He's in the middle of the park.
I think they worked on the property.
Well, it's not a, yeah, that's not part of the campground.
No, I know, but, yeah.
Yeah, I know some of them are family members. I spoke to them in the past about some of those.
But that's not year-round camping.
And, and, you know, I just, just speak to them. But the other one, I mean, he's right in the middle of the parking lot.
That's not.
And, and the campground itself is supposed to be closed after October.
Exactly. That's the key.
And it's not.
Right. And, and where he's parked, you can hear a fire truck around it. It's right on the edge. Should we postpone? This because of the lack of signature and because of those campers?
Certain issues, yeah. We can probably vote on the other day. What's the...
See, I don't know if this has anything to do with our regs, but I read recently they had some golf cart accident. Somebody was drunk and went somewhere over, and they were sued.
Yeah, that's an insurance thing, right?
Yeah, the guy you think fell down the stairs.
True, yeah.
He may go to jail, I heard.
No.
The DUI.
Guy, no, guy fell down the stairs. Probably not falling down the stairs.
When was this recently?
Two years ago.
Oh, that was, that was, I believe, all the...
But I, I think the DUI, this is his second or third. He's gonna go to jail, he said, or something like that.
Well, even a recreation vehicle, phone bill, boat, anything.
I think we will have to do separate motions on the campground renewals.
You need a signature on Sun Valley's other name.
I think we should refuse to do Sun Valley.
Yeah.
Cindy's point is a good one, and Dave should go check stuff out because that...
On the information we got from Q. Public.
Yeah.
They like Q. Public.
Yeah. I'll make a motion. We approve the Roaring Brook campground application. And what are we talking? One year from?
Yeah.
So one year from three, five, eighteen? Is that what we're doing or no?
No, we're doing the three...
Thunder Corn, Thunder.
Three, one. It's a standard, correct?
Yeah, it's a fact.
Just a renewal of the perm, right?
It's just a renewal of the perm.
That's what we tried to do. It always coming in.
I'm guessing three, one, yeah.
So the one-year renewal of Roaring Brook. First, no, just one.
We can do the three and, and, and Sun Valley.
You keep reading.
We could, you wanna do all three together, Nancy? We can do all three.
You can do that.
I'll make, uh, I'll amend my motion. Roaring Brook Campground and Mineral Springs Family Campground and Reddington Rock Riding Club, renewals for one year for all three.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, at this time, Sun Valley camping, um, are we denying the permit? Or are we just going to...
Well, it's incomplete.
Table it? Well, wait a minute. There's a, there's some issues, too, not just signing.
Why don't you just table it? We got the money. We need the signature.
We do have the money.
Yeah.
All right, um, I'll make a motion...
And it doesn't start for a while, so they got time.
Exactly, right.
I'll make a motion that we table the annual camping renewal permit for Sun Valley Camping Cooperative in order to get a signature and to meet with the zoning enforcement officer.
Second, Dave.
Any further discussion? You're in none. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Um, housing and zoning. I don't know about you guys. What time is it? Twenty after nine. Are we ready to go through that?
Thank you.
We did that.
I'm taking a cookie. Please, no, please.
Take a cookie.
Take a cookie. Otherwise, we have to eat them.
All this, just for yes. Thank you. Thank you.
I would be more than happy to skip all that stuff, um, and skip over to number seven, which is to review the zoning regulations.
Okay. Let me just pass this thing out, and we will put the agenda item number six to our next meeting, but I wanna pass out the reason for that information in your packet was this article, one for Annie, I think, yeah, article that was in the paper regarding some legislation, uh, hopefully I made enough, uh, legislation for affordable housing where if we don't have the percentage the state wants, we could lose our funding.
Well, that's, it's, that's, that's, I went to, I actually went to legislative breakfast last Friday with Anna and Andy. We're discussing it. I'm, no one knows what exactly is going to happen.
That's what Dave had meant today, and he said everything's up in there.
It's, it's a short session.
Yeah.
Big surprise.
There's like four, there's like four of them that they proposed, and some of them are really onerous, and the other ones are like, they slap you on the wrist if you don't do it, but...
But I'm taking the, the stance that I'd rather be proactive. And so let's put it on the next, you know, I'd like to get a, a certain percentage. I don't think eight percent's right. I know we have more than that.
But look at the other, look at all the other towns before.
But that's, you know, there's no way for me to audit it.
Well, I think if we had, um, let's discuss it next time. We'll discuss it next time. I have some ideas.
Take some digging, but I would think you could figure it out.
I got lots of time.
Yeah, it was supposed to be a ten.
Was he being facetious? I think so.
I think that was sarcasm, Sheldon. Sheldon, that was sarcasm.
What happens is when you lose that funding.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, right. Okay, Dave, what would you like?
I, I just, that, the brewery and signs on Main Street, we have a regulation that only allows the hanging signs perpendicular to be eighteen inches. I mean, they're all like four feet.
Sure.
I was, I was checking that, Dave. Correct me if I'm wrong. The design incentive that Don Poland put in allowed sixteen inch plus a fifteen percent if it matched the, the building and the look of the building, and it wasn't plastic, which would come up to eighteen inches.
Does projecting?
I think so. It's, uh, page sixty-nine in our regs. And I was checking that out. Let's see, yeah. Design incentive for business. Let's see, a fifty percent increase in total level size of signs may be granted. Let's see, maybe it's not projected away, though. Designer signs designed to the overall context of the building, character surrounding area, proportions of the building do not dominate the building, made of wood or synthetic wood-like material or metal, blah, blah.
All right, so that means I can go from eighteen inches to twenty-one.
I think we're sixteen, aren't we?
Yeah, so what's fifteen, what's fifteen?
We only go to eighteen point two.
Yeah.
So it's not a big, you know? I thought his thing really made a big difference, but a tiny difference.
Yeah.
I thought it did, too.
I, I always thought when he proposed it, it was a huge change, but...
Those are the signs on Main Street.
You were taking pictures today, weren't you?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Talked to about a coffee shop. About five thirty. Yeah, yeah, that was you.
So these guys wanna have a projecting sign, the vape shop on the left at the end of Main Street?
Okay.
And they, I told them, they put a little one up there.
Yeah.
At least they're asking. None of the other ones asked.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're about five, they're about five blank side holders.
And they sit back off the road and...
Yeah, that's right.
You know, they're not right on the sidewalk.
Well, doesn't it, does the projection, is that over a sidewalk? Isn't that...
Yeah.
So it wouldn't matter. Is it over the sidewalk?
So they could put a piece of plywood up.
So they wanna project one, too, the vape shop?
Till the wind comes through.
The vape shop, not the bake shop, the vape shop.
Well, I like the use because the vape shop called it, the vape shop called it. Laura and I like missed the, which one, which side of the street? Both went into the aisle.
Vape and vape. The Old Olive store, Olive Oil store?
Yeah, Stephanie Bakery.
Bakery.
On Saturdays.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the, the Middle Grounds bakery.
You wouldn't know it because she doesn't have any sign up, you know? And she's asking for a sign.
So that's who wants to do the sign, or is it the big, I thought it was?
Both of them. That's what I said, the vape and the bake.
Oh, baby bake.
What I would suggest is that they stay kinda uniform for the rest of them on the street, nothing...
Well, they're all, I mean, they're all about, I mean, they're probably a half a piece of plywood, four-foot section of plywood.
But you would have to change the regulation, or they'd have to get a variance, right?
Correct.
We gotta live with that.
Or else I'd just say, just, I mean, how did all those signs show up?
They're old.
Yeah, but they can't be that old.
No, they're not that old.
Or they replaced all the ones. I mean, like, all the ones on Main Street are probably thirty years old.
We gotta live with our, we gotta live with our regulations until we change them.
We should have a sign that looks like a brand.
The dance, no, the dance and Happy Nails.
Have we just changed them?
Went in.
Have we just adopted these?
I know.
So we need to live with them.
No.
But Nick's at a dance place?
Yeah.
No, she's been there more than a year.
Yeah, but I, but I mean, the sign, it's not thirty years old.
The dance place isn't, no.
No. The D S or the Happy Nails, that sign's...
Well, the, the dance sign could be thirty years old. It just took Marjorie off.
I know Louis put up his own signs. He never...
So what do you, what do you wanna do, commission?
No sign shall project more than sixteen inches from the face of a structure and not more than twelve inches beyond any street line off the sidewalk.
Right.
And it shall be at least ten feet above the level of a walkway it may overhang.
I mean, you just keep the projection over the street line, the twelve inches, and strike the first part.
Right.
And, and then you have an area requirement, right?
I don't think there's much of one for the street sign for that one. What's the area of Gene?
No, he said that.
Ah, good question. Temporary signs.
Where else is, oh, where'd you read that projecting one?
It's, uh, page sixty-six. Oh, maximum area. Hmm. Two square feet for each linial front foot of exterior building wall.
So that'd be huge.
Sign may project up to six feet over the top of the exterior.
And sixty-eight's got the chart for the maximum size. We gotta find something that works in here. I mean, we just adopted these things.
He, he didn't really change it very much. He just got rid of the, um...
Just added the incentive.
Yeah.
The incentive got added.
And he got rid of the, um, you know, the constitutional problems.
Right, exactly.
Well, ten feet in height off the sidewalk, you should make up a story pole on every sign you did.
Well, there's some little ones. I tried to reach some of them, I thought I could, but...
Well, the pottery store is definitely not ten feet off the ground.
Well, you know, we add them to the agenda for future change, we fix them. We gotta live with what we have right now.
All the blank ones that are there are obviously grandfathered. There's like five of them that just have the pole.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can't imagine there wasn't one on that building before they redid the face of it.
Good point, no.
That was residential.
That was a house.
This, this, the house.
Oh, the vape.
The vape shop. There was no sign.
Vape, not bake.
Yeah, good point, Cindy, yeah.
The other one's never assigned there.
That was a house. Rough house.
So, you know, she was, she was almost, I mean, she was willing, I think, to deal with eighteen inches.
Our regulations. Which one, the vape or the bake?
The bake.
The bake. What about the bake?
She wanted something bigger.
A bake.
Well, I mean, they're, most of them are like almost four feet, three to four feet.
And let her do a temporary sign until, until, well, then you're getting closer and closer to that intersection one.
Well, I can let her have a temporary sign.
Temporary signs can be installed.
Right, until the regulations.
So she just have to come in every month and get a new one?
No.
Well, you don't want to deter anyone.
Well, I could, I could make her go get a variance.
What's the hardship?
It's financial.
How much is a variance?
Too much.
A variance is expensive.
It's getting...
It's hard enough to make a...
For a sign like this, you gotta go get a variance?
Well, that's why I say, I mean, work with what, whatever changes. You want to do the regulation, in the meantime, you give a temporary sign.
Right.
And...
Well, she puts up the sign that fits our regulations, and we adjust our regulations, and next year, whenever she puts a new one up. That's not a catastrophe.
I guess you could talk to her.
But that's not going to pertain to just Main Street, it's going to pertain to everything.
I could just, I could just change the number when we update the regulations.
Yeah.
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping.
It was wrong all the time.
So, uh...
Need to call for something.
We have to...
So, so that's, that's, I'll come back to you with something for that. Um, the brewery, the guy wanted to do the brewery on the next door up from the vape shop. They own Buick Place or whatever it is.
McCollum's.
A brewery. So I put down here a couple of things. Is this an allowed use in zone? Restaurants are okay, cafes are okay.
Where is this?
McCollum's.
Peshawta's building.
Peshawta's storage building.
With all the tires underneath, you're gonna have a commercial business up the top?
Wouldn't it be wonderful to have the tires gone and have a commercial there?
But isn't, because there's no sprinkler system there.
Well, we, I think a brewery using that building for, other than a warehouse, would be wonderful.
You couldn't steer them to Bakers?
We used to have, David, we had that regulation that allowed the commission to do whatever the commission wanted to do.
Well, for items not covered, or similar, similar items.
Don Poland and I got rid of that one, because we sort of thought it had more to do with ZBA.
But isn't, is there a...
Non-parking.
Under alcohol, is there a separation between like...
Bakers would be perfect.
Yeah, between cafes and restaurants.
Right, so, because that's basically right next door, you know, would they meet a separation?
Oh, no, we don't, I don't think we have any separation.
We don't have a separation?
I don't think so.
Dave, was this a rental, or are they gonna buy that building?
He was thinking about buying it. I think he may have disappeared.
What about Bakers?
He had nothing about that.
I'd love to get Main Street done, Nancy.
Yeah, he had a lot of, a lot of years trying to get rid of bars on Main Street.
But the problem is, look at...
We've already got a, we've got a cider.
The cideries open this.
We've already got the cider.
They build a church parking lot.
We have two warehouses on Main Street that I would love to see active businesses in, right now. Tire warehouse and appliance warehouse. And I think it, Main Street would be so much healthier if we could get real businesses in there that were...
A brewery?
Yeah, sure.
Parking is a difficult...
Well, I mean, he was really talking more manufacturing than...
That's fine.
Than cafe.
All right, is there, is there?
The spring houses, the spring houses have no parking, it'd survive forever. Processing of agricultural goods.
Yeah, exactly. But that's more, that's more in a commercial.
Yeah, the problem is he wants to have a tasting room too, though, right?
Yeah, but you can do that if it's not more than twenty-five percent of your airspace, but that is in a commercial and an industrial zone, not a retail zone.
And Dave, where would the, the trucks, if they're gonna be just manufacturing and, and delivering, they go behind?
They would own the parking lot there too.
That space.
That, that's their parking lot, if I'm not mistaken.
Where all the pictures are.
Yeah, the murals there. I think that's all Peshawta's doing.
But I mean, because there's no way, uh...
It goes right up to the driveway, that goes down.
Wouldn't they do it behind the building?
I don't really know, I don't really know the buildings.
Because that's where...
There's a, there's a, like a service, there's a service way behind, between the railroad tracks and the building.
Right, right. It's gotta be for tractor trailer if they're gonna do large manufacturing of beer.
Well, at least a straight job. I don't know if you get it, I don't know how many tractor trailers there are. I don't know if it'd be tractor trailers, it might be smaller, or the person would be delivering them themselves in a van, most likely.
Like a van?
Yeah, well, that's what, like, Burnside Ice, Burnside Ice and Ten Finny Ale all come in eight, so they deliver them in vans.
I'd like to see it happen, if we could make it happen.
Processing and packaging of goods for sale. That's making beers, isn't it?
Yes. I think you did good there, Dave, yeah.
Oh, there's consumption in my...
So does that mean, um, he's gonna go ahead, it's allowed?
I think we can, I think, and then you can have a cafe.
Yes, you can.
And a cafe is like...
Cafe would require a special permit, though, right?
Sure.
Yeah. You have to be registered.
Yeah, we have, right. But a cafe could serve alcohol, I don't...
But they have to serve food too.
To be a cafe?
We had that issue with...
It's the cider. How's the cider get away with it? No food, beer nuts and pretzels? Or, or, or they can't serve food. I figure what exactly?
Cider is rather unique, isn't it?
Because if they serve food, they...
Kind of like a restaurant. Right, but then the next step is gonna be a food truck parking front, in between the two of them, and JD's looking out the window saying... Now, the food truck could be over at Larry's Dirt Parking Lot by Maccos, right? Don't take, food trucks are coming.
Have we helped you?
Yeah, everywhere.
Here's Mr. Perkins, have we helped you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, let's, at our next meeting, we'll do the forestry, uh, the housing, um...
The whole people have called it, huh?
Housing and zo...
About the state law.
Am I talking to the wind here, you two?
No, good. Tell them to shut up, have a cookie.
Oh, I want to get out of here too. Housing and zoning, uh, forestry for next meeting. And the brewery, we're okay in the signs, or you're coming back with the signs too?
Yeah, let's talk about the signs somewhere, but I'll, I'll see if I can wing something in this.
So we've actually just started up with the signs again, so now we're gonna revisit signs.
Relative to the Main Street, right? They can get a temporary sign, and then we'll work on, right?
We're gonna have to make changes if we have to.
I, I can't see a variance.
It's gonna take a while for them to get a, if they're buying a nice, real sign, then it takes a little while.
Yeah.
And they're expensive, so.
Yeah.
Temporary one, you know, banner type that Rossi could make in the meantime or something.
Right, because a, a variance is, what'd you say, three hundred dollars?
Not gonna happen.
They can't get a variance.
Because there's no hardship, Nancy.
That's true.
It's not a legal one.
Theoretically, couldn't they just keep the sandwich boards out there? I'd rather see a temporary sign.
Oh, me too, but I see, I see, on Saturdays, you've got to walk around all the...
Dave's concert the other night, last Friday or whatever.
You gotta walk around the signs.
They're allowed. Cideries doing well though.
Yeah, I think so. I think they're doing well. I have only been on a few times, but...
Okay, go for it.
All right, if there's any other new and other business, Dave, you have?
Yeah, we, the historical commission has been working on the with school.
I wanted to talk to you about that.
And there's a lot of different proposals being thrown around. One of them was, this guy Joe Bellone wants to convert it into apartments. Then there was the School of Innovative Learning, who's still interested, and it doesn't have their funding yet, to turn it into some kind of a school. And then, uh, the housing, the Stafford Housing Authority wants to maybe turn it into some kind of housing for veterans and so forth. Plus, there was another suggestion last night about turning into, trying to get someone interested into making it into YMCA. But the problem we have is that technically the building sits on the land of Hyde Park.
That's open space.
Pardon me?
It's open space.
That's, that's, that could be true, but it still sits on Hyde Park. And the problem is that if it's, and Mary has issued a, um, RFP to try to find realtors to sell that building and the, um, twenty... Nobody's responded yet, but the, the RFP just went out. So, the problem is that the, the building didn't have a deed. There's no deed.
Right, it's, it's...
The deed takes in Hyde Park.
Correct.
But not the building. So the building is sold, there's no deed. It needs to have a deed, and it needs to have some kind of a survey that said what goes with it. The problem is that Davis came to the meeting last night and talked to us about it, and it seems like there's a way to do this with the overlay zone? And turn it into, um, he said B zone, okay, which would allow it to have almost anything in it.
Create a new zone? Create a new zone?
We don't have a B zone.
Well, it's...
Oh, yeah, local.
Local business, but not B zone.
You'll have to ask Dave.
LB.
LB.
But doesn't help your deed issue.
No.
But the problem, the real problem lies in, he was talking about what that zone would require for side yard and backyard requirements or front yard requirements. And the way he explained it is the front yard's requirement, as far as he's concerned, is the one that faces the street. That requires fifty feet, okay, that's fine. And that we can deal with, because it's there anyway. The street that goes up the other side, over by the pond.
The coverage is gonna be the only...
Yeah, the problem we have is that the other side that faces the ban shell requires fifty feet. And that encroaches on Hyde Park, the fifty feet. So, the question is, we need to solve that problem. And if we, we're gonna have to get the Hyde Park Commission involved, because you're not gonna be able to take fifty feet from Hyde Park. Because that puts the, the line over the hill, and people go up on that hill to watch the ban shell. And they go up there and they sit along the sidewalk, which is, what, fifteen feet from the building.
And I went sliding there this winter.
Butch, let me, let me interrupt. Let me interrupt. It would seem you have, it would seem that there's a much, much bigger problem in that the land underneath it doesn't go with the building. How do you solve that problem?
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a, um, a statute that says that, uh, whenever a school abandons a building, that reverts back to the town, and it's up to the selectmen to decide what to do with it.
That's an ordinance you just said?
That's not an ordinance, that's a state statute.
State statute?
Yes.
Huh?
And, um, Ed Muska did a letter to tell me about it, and he said, of course, there were no deed restrictions. But that's on the, well, the Hyde Park part. There's no deed for the building, none, does not exist. So, I'm putting it out there for you to think about, because somehow, if we're gonna sell that building, that building's gonna wind up sold. We all think on our commission that that problem needs to be solved before the building gets marketed, or else it's gonna be a mess.
Well, yeah.